That's mine.
Yours.
Let me make sure mine. Oh my God.
Well, I'm not in the pyramid anymore. I'm at Lanier. It is. Good to see you.
What? Ethnic partners.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Are you supposed to have the flag?
No. No worries. Aren't they all supposed to be here or do they just choose?
No, they're at this one.
Because mine is not here. They had an option. They didn't have to be at this one. Okay. Let me tell you about it. Board members, if I can ask you to come to the table. This January 24th, 2019 regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Lanier Middle School, "Winds," Chamber Winds, under the direction of Charlie Bertsch.
With liberty, justice, or all.
Thank you, Mr. Bertsch. It was a wonderful performance. It's good to see you again. In order to comply with Section 2.2, 3712-D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on January 24th, 2019, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon and seconded by Ms. Keesgamar. All those in favor? And that motion is unanimous with Ms. Darrenak Kofax and Mr. Wilson away from the table. A few other announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. Ms. Schultz is absent this evening. The contract award for the provision of graduate coursework for FCPS teachers' agenda item has been moved to the consent agenda, moved from the consent agenda to an action item at the request of a board member. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under the upcoming School Board meetings. The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select School Board from the full menu, then click on the Watch Live button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cell phone. I call on Mr. Tigner for an announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. African-American History Month is February 2019. Originally established as Negro History Week in 1926 by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted African-American author and scholar, this event involved, evolved into the establishment in 1976 of February as Black History Month. The commemoration has increasingly been referred to as African-American History Month, although both names are currently in use. This year's theme, Black Migrations, emphasizes the movement of people of African descent to new destinations and subsequently to new social realities. Beginning in the 20th century, African-American migration patterns included relocation from southern farms to southern cities, from the South to the Northeast, Midwest, and West, from the Caribbean to U.S. cities, and the emigration of noted African-Americans to Africa and to European cities such as Paris and London after the end of World War I and World War II. Such migrations resulted in more diverse and stratified interracial and intra-racial urban population amid a changing social milieu. The emergence of both black industrial workers and black entrepreneurs, the growing number and variety of urban churches and new religions, new music forms like ragtime, blues, and jazz, the blossomy of visual and literary arts as in New York, Washington, D.C., Chicago, and Paris in the 1910s and 1920s. African-American millennials have reserved, have reversed the history trend in the recent years with an uptick in black populations in Atlanta, Houston, and other southern communities, bringing the North-South migration full circle. Thank you.
I now call on Mrs. Evans for the recognition of the National School Counseling Week.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am delighted to be offering this recognition to honor some of our most critical employees in FCPS, our school counselors who do so much for so many students, and in particular some, some, some specific school counselors as well. National School Counseling Week 2019, School Counselors Providing Lessons for Life, will be celebrated from February 4th to 8th to focus public attention on the unique contribution of school counselors within U.S. school systems. National School Counseling Week, sponsored by ASCA, highlights the tremendous impact school counselors can have in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. National School Counseling Week is always celebrated the first full week in February. Fairfax County Public Schools employs close to 700 school counseling professionals, including school counselors, directors of student services, and career center specialists. These professionals are committed to preparing students to become lifelong learners and productive members in a global society with a focus on social emotional wellness, academic success, and college and career readiness. Thank you to all of our school counseling professionals for the tremendous work they do. As part of School Counseling Week, it is an honor to congratulate two current and one recently retired school counseling professional for recent recognitions at the state and regional level. Judy Edwards, retired career center specialist from Lake Braddock Secondary School, was named one of the Potomac and Chesapeake Association for College Admission Counseling's 2018 Counselors of the Year. Ms. Edwards advocated for her students, helped to coordinate a district-wide college fair, and was active in seeking out local and district-wide scholarship opportunities for students. Erin Hurley, school counselor at cherry-run elementary school, was named the 2018 Elementary School Counselor of the Year by the Virginia School Counselor Association. Ms. Hurley has been cited by students and colleagues for her dedication to teaching students coping skills, nurturing them emotionally, and reminding them that there is support for the way they are feeling. Dr. Terry Mason, school counselor at Hunt Valley Elementary School, was named the Virginia Counselor of the Year by the Virginia Counselors Association. Students and staff at Hunt Valley ES Elementary School praised Dr. Mason for being thoughtful and friendly, expressed hope in knowing they always have someone to talk to, and admire her ability to always put the whole child at the forefront of conversations. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Terry Mason, Erin Hurley, and staff from the Office of School Counseling and Instructional Services Department to the dais for a photo with the school board.
In recognition of the National Career and Technical Education Month, I call on Mr. McElveen for the recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my honor to read the National CTE Month recognition. Career and Technical Education, or CTE Month, is a public awareness campaign held every February to celebrate CTE and the achievements and accomplishments of CTE programs across the country. This year's theme, Celebrate Today, Own Tomorrow, raises awareness of the innovation and excellence that exists in our CTE programs, as well as the crucial role that CTE plays in readying our students for careers and our nation for economic success. Career and technical education prepares both youth and adults for a wide range of careers, from nursing to computer technician. These careers may require varying levels of education, from high school to post-secondary certificates to two- and four-year college degrees. The subject areas most commonly associated with career and technical education are business and information technology, including programming, accounting, and cybersecurity; trade and industrial, which includes skilled trades such as automotive technician, carpenter, cosmetologist, and law enforcement; health and medical services, which includes nursing, dental, and emergency medical technicians; family and consumer sciences, which includes culinary arts, child development, and education; marketing, which includes sales, fashion, and entrepreneurship; and technology education, which includes electronics, robotics, and engineering. Career and technical education is offered in middle schools, high schools, two-year community colleges, and technical colleges, and other post-secondary schools. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, 18 of the 20 fastest-growing occupations within the next decade will require career in technical education. Thank you to all of our CTE teachers and staff who help students realize portrait of a graduate outcomes and ensure students are college and career-ready. With that, please join me in welcoming the CTE staff from the Instructional Services Department to the dais for a photo with the Board. I should add, if we have any members of the C-TAC, they should come up as well.
Citizen Participation. The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, two citizens have signed up to address the Board. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as the capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. First up is Alex Tran. Mr. Tran? Okay. Second, Norm Hall.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be here on time to make these brief remarks. I contemplated making citizen time remarks during the January 10th meeting, but decided it would be better to first hear and see what was in the 2020 budget. My hopes before Dr. Braybrand's presentation were that despite minimal mention of special education in the four elements of the strategic plan, there would be commitments expressed within the budget document to address the commonly shared concerns about academic achievement gaps and the need for greater emphasis on inclusionary practices, all done with fidelity to best practices. The presentation and board discussion that night did not meet my hopes. While I support the total budget levels and encourage the adoption of the budget, I am concerned about what may happen if the House of Delegates and the Virginia Senate do not approve Governor Northam's budgetary commitments to K-12 education. In a few moments, I will put on the septa advocacy hat, walk down the hallway to the left to comment on the budget situation. My remarks here tonight are only in order because accountability to students with disabilities is not addressed in the budget document supporting the superintendent's presentation, nor was accountability raised during the School Board discussion immediately following that presentation, nor was accountability with respect to special education brought up during Tuesday's budget work session. I've had 22 budget questions since I was able to access the 220-page document available to me after the budget presentation. I promise you will get them during the public hearing. Tonight, I basically want to ask this 12-member School Board to define accountability as it pertains to the school system. On page 22 of the budget document, I read, "FCPS is accountable for the academic achievement of all students. FCPS measures academic progress to ensure that all students, regardless of race, poverty, language, or disability, will graduate with the knowledge and skills necessary for college and/or employment. FCPS spends money wisely. FCPS directs funds to the classroom and finds ways to improve performance across the spectrum of academic programs and business processes." My question is this: Would an accountability with respect to students with disabilities mean that if prior-year performance did not measurably improve, then there would be a more focused effort in the next year without the community needing to lobby? And when should accountability at the system level be expected to show progressive results? If it's not a budget question, what is it that we are waiting for? A final point: Professionally, I work with a complete span of K-12. There are chances to explore everyday math using counting strategies, arithmetic, algebra, and precalculus. Call me unusual, call me eccentric, but I'd like to see students appreciate the value of taking math concepts to the next level. When it comes to School Board presentations, it seems that in too many cases, staff reports stop at the algebra stage without considering the multivariate factors that contribute to enrollment estimates by school, as one example. I want to ask the Board to make sure that staff shows their work when turning in their homework.
Mr. Hall, thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Student Representative Matters. I call on Mr. Tigler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. I guess, although it's sort of a rhetorical announcement, it's the end of the quarter, end of the semester. Do we have any seniors? You guys have any seniors? There's a senior back there. Good job, right? So for most of you guys, at least, great. They're sent out now. And although this doesn't mean you can just drop everything and do nothing for the rest of the year, it is a big relief. And on that note, I'm going to go back to some of the other stresses that come into our county. So at least I know for some of my teachers, a couple of them have been really stressed out lately. And because for students, you know, yeah, we've got a lot of work, but they've also grained a lot of stuff, especially at the end. Even now, it's a three-day weekend, we get a nice break, teachers have to go in tomorrow and work, right? So they've got a normal two-day weekend, and they've got a lot of grading, a lot of stress on them, too. So this goes back to what I'd like to talk about tonight, which is saying thank you. We had a great lesson in my leadership class from my teacher, Lynn Fiskus, about saying thank you and the benefits that it will do to other people. She told a really great story about how she was at a summer camp once, and this one girl who, she felt she was unnoticed, and that actually she did, didn't really even impact. But they did an exercise where everyone had to write a thank you note for everyone. And this girl didn't get a thank you note. So our teacher, Ms. Fiskus, wrote her a note and gave it to her. And I think about four years later, after college, when she ran into her, she showed her that she had actually had a picture of that note, and it's pasted up on her college desk, right? And she looks at it every day. And just that small thank you, it pushed her to, right, it has a big impact. It's really cool how just one small thank you really can change how a person sees themselves and how they feel, if they can have an impact on others. And this goes to also points where you can or should say thank you, but sometimes you do something else. And this is another interesting article I read about the difference between saying "I'm sorry" and saying "thank you." I don't know if anyone's ever explored that before. But an example of that would be "sorry to trouble you" versus "thank you for listening to me." Or "hey, I'm sorry for being late" versus "thank you for waiting for me." And just that small difference in the wording actually leads to the topic or the focus, instead of being on you and saying "I'm sorry," and someone feels as if they have to comfort you or be there for you, to being to them and recognizing something good they've done. And it's sort of a great segue to be able to progress out of a situation that might not be the best and progress outwards in a positive way. So sometimes when I'm writing an email to a teacher, I think it was something like that, I'd apologize for missing an assignment date. And instead, I said, "thank you for making an exception," right? And that means a lot to a teacher because they get said thank you, too, right? And in that sense, hopefully, they'll be nicer to other students in the future as well, too, right, which is great. But moving on from that, I'd like to recognize the Student Leadership Cohort. You guys are coming out tonight. Thank you so much. Hopefully, you guys have a big impact later on your schools, and student advocacy is really important, and one voice can make a very large difference. So hopefully, stay to that. I'd also like to say thank you for coming out, even though it's too many shout-outs, but to Olivia, she's a really close friend of mine. She also goes to my school, South Lakes High School. And to sort of wrap it up, end of the quarter, I missed a couple nights of good sleep. I got probably a total of eight hours in the past three nights, so not that much. That's what you should get for one night. But I'm sure I'm not the only one. So for anybody out there, if you missed a couple nights of sleep, use the weekend to catch up and get a good start to that next quarter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tigler. Item 5.01, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the Board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, we will make several motions to confirm the recommendation. I now call on Ms. Hines for a motion.
Madam Chair, regarding the employee discussed in closed session, I move that the School Board accept the recommendations of the hearing officer and the superintendent, that the employee be dismissed and their teaching license revoked, and that the matter be forwarded to the State Superintendent of Public Instruction and the State Board of Education.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Palchek. All those in favor? I have Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, Ms. Kees-Gamarra, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchek, Ms. Hines. Those against? Those abstaining? Abstaining are Mr. Wilson and Ms. Darrenak Kofax. That motion carries. I now call on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed illegal drugs and drug paraphernalia on school property, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Hines? Okay. All those in favor? So I have Ms. Hines, Ms. Palchek, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, Mr. Moon, Ms. Strauss. Those against? Ms. Evans, those abstaining? I have Ms. McLaughlin and Mr. Wilson. That motion, pardon me? Ms. Kees-Gamarra? You'll be abstaining? Okay. Then that motion carries. I now call on Ms. Kees-Gamarra for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to grant, impart the school reassignment appeal of a student who threatened a student at school, and to modify the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. McLaughlin. All those in favor? Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, Ms. Kees-Gamarra, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Ms. Hines, Ms. Palchek, and Mr. McElveen, and myself. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Abstention by Mr. Wilson and Ms. Darrenak Kofax. That motion carries. Strategic Plan Goal Four Resource Stewardship. I call on Ms. Strauss for the motion.
Thank you. I move that the School Board approve the Goal Four Resource Stewardship report as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Palchek. Ms. Strauss, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. We received this report in a regular Thursday meeting in October, and then spent another long discussion in a work session. This goal report, Resource Stewardship, is part of our strategic plan. It reflects work completed in fiscal year 2018. In other words, the last school year. It's a very large, very comprehensive report. I want to commend staff again and the superintendent for the work that is reflected here. And this Goal Four report speaks to our commitment to being good stewards of the public's investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Palchek, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. Also briefly adding, I second the work of staff, especially Ms. Burden and your team's efforts to help us better align our strategic plan and resource stewardship with our goals. I know we have work to do, and I look forward to our work session. And Dr. Braybrand, thank you for helping us clarify, prioritize, and move forward in the many strategy goals we have. So I will be second this motion and look forward to our continuing work, work in progress on Goal Four specifically. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. I call on Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Just briefly, thank you very much. I'll certainly be supporting this. I was pleased that in our work session discussion, we had some conversation about how the school system has made a good start in including benchmarks on energy savings and greenhouse gas emissions reduction, really important efforts. And as we mentioned in the work session, I think we'll be all looking forward to making those measures a little more robust and maybe including some other types of measures in that, especially as we begin to change our fuel sources, our sources of energy over the next few years.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. McLaughlin?
I just wanted to share with the public that the Board in its work session reviewed this 90-page report. There was extensive hours of discussion by the Board and appreciation for Dr. Braybrand and his team. In recent memory, this is one of the most robust reports that I've certainly reviewed and greatly appreciated. The additional detail and information provided, I think it's very helpful to the public to get a greater degree of understanding of the school division's commitment to resource stewardship. Ms. Hines, you said- Ms. Hines, you said it best, you know, this is a work in progress. I think it's incumbent upon the board to continue to partner with the superintendent on the various metrics that we do include in there. But I also want to encourage the public, please, when you have an interest in certain areas like this one, review the report and communicate back with us on the board. Let us know if there are metrics that you feel we haven't captured that you would want to know more about, or areas of focus that you feel would improve the system. Because in the end, this is all about serving our students, our children, and the expectations of our community. And so your shared input will make a big difference in how we not only deliver information and deliberate on information, but continue to, again, serve a system that is known nationally for ensuring our children have the best education possible.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Evans, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to congratulate staff on an excellent report. This is a very robust report, and we did have a lengthy conversation in our work session. So I did want to just give the public who may be watching tonight a heads-up that one of the discussion items at that work session was the issue of equity. We have asked the superintendent to come back to us and report in the future on what, for example, we are doing at our high-poverty schools to support our high-poverty schools in seeking grants and private funding. We've also asked to start the conversation about how we can level the playing field at schools that have more difficulty in raising funds on their own. We know that there are some schools that have no difficulty in getting large numbers of funds for their PTAs, for their athletic programs, and others that have more difficulty. And it's time that we discuss this issue as part of our resource stewardship as well. So I did want the public to understand that even though we may be not having a major discussion tonight on that particular topic, that that has been raised and will be a topic in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I will now take the privilege of being the chair and say a few words about this. First, thank you very much to the staff for the excellent work that you have done in preparing the Resource Stewardship Report. Of particular note is the increased focus of using best practices in strategic decision-making as we determine how we use our resources and how we allocate them, and defining what the pathway to an implementation of that strategic decision-making framework is. And so I very much appreciate that, because I think what you will see is that as we roll out in more detail over time, because we are detailing this every year with more granularity, you will see the questions of this board focusing on how do we use the resources available to us to ensure that the FCPS promise is realized by every student in our system and all of our staff, and ensuring that as part of our resource stewardship that we look at ensuring that the programs are available to our students no matter where they are in the county. And so I very much appreciate this report and the opportunities that it will, that we will have going forward to further this discussion. And with that, I will, the motion before us is that the board approve the Goal Four Resource Stewardship Report as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor? And that is unanimous? The motion passes. Item 5.03, the Fiscal Year 2020 to 2024 Capital Improvement Program. I call on Ms. Keys-Gamarra for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board approve the Fiscal Year 2020-2024 Capital Improvement Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Darrenak-Kofax. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm very appreciative of the amount of work that has gone into this CIP recognizing that we have some funding limitations, and we have lots of concerns that we want to address. And we've had extensive discussions as a board to try to figure out how best to do that. I want to assure the public that we are well aware of many of the capacity issues that many of the board members are concerned about across this county. And the board will be having more extensive conversations coming up in February to discuss how best to approach boundaries in a more comprehensive fashion. I fully support that, especially since I think we are obligated to have on the lens of one Fairfax, making sure that we are implementing and we are all working together as colleagues. And I believe we're all in agreement toward transparency, equity, and fairness to all of our similarly situated schools. And so with that, I do support this, the CIP, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Ms. Darrenak-Kofax, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, just briefly, Madam Chair. I too appreciate the hard work of our staff, Mr. Plattenberg, Mr. Sneed, and Ms. Gillis, for all of your hard work in getting this CIP document and understanding of it better and better each year. There is great transparency there, and with great transparency often comes the opportunity to have courageous conversations. And so that started during our work session. For those of you who have watched it or haven't, I would encourage you to do that. I think I will be supporting both motions that are coming before us, particularly, you know, the one talking about, you know, needing more funding to get on a quicker renovation cycle. But I think as you look at this and the courageous conversations that have started, I think we are going to have to talk in detail in the coming years about boundaries, about socioeconomic segregation, and also that these are resulting in areas that are overcrowding and some areas that are under capacity. So the CIP points this out, and the conversation that will occur will occur in many different ways, not just with the CIP when we have that. So, but thank you all for putting your hard work into this, and I look forward to hearing from my colleagues, and I look forward to moving this forward tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Darrenak-Kofax. I do have a comment by Ms. McLaughlin.
I just wanted to share some of the comments that we had during the work session for the CIP, and in particular, to Mr. Plattenberg. We are very cognizant and appreciative of the fact that with very limited staff, you and your team have worked extremely hard to try and identify where the needs are in the overcrowding and the renovations. And it's been extremely helpful to us as individual board members, especially those of us who represent magisterial districts, that you and your team take such time out to really get to understand what's happening in our districts and to try and help us find solutions. And I just do want to take this opportunity to say that we are hopeful that Dr. Bray-Bran will be working with his leadership team and the budget, because it's essential that as we look at how to best utilize the seats available in some school buildings, while we have overcrowding in other buildings, that we may need to look at how we, where we're assigning students, where we're placing programs. And that takes people. So I just wanted to, again, express my appreciation, because I know how hard you all work, especially in getting this document pulled together. And on behalf of the Braddock District in particular, I know you've spent a lot of time and energy looking at many of my elementary schools. And it's appreciated the work you've provided in the CIP and addressing the concerns that I've been bringing to your attention, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. We do have two amendments tonight, and so I would like to go ahead with those. I call on Ms. Hines for an amendment.
Thank you. And I apologize for my voice, I caught the bug. I move to amend the main motion by adding the following on page 163. Solar, quote, "Solar PPA Pilot." "FCPS plans to complete the installation of solar panels on at least three schools upon the conclusion of the Joint County and Schools RFP, Request for Proposals." "It is recommended that the power generated by the solar arrays will provide at least 76% of the energy required to operate each school." "On January 14, 2019, the FCPS school board selected three schools to be included in the Fairfax County 2019 Request for Proposals for a Power Purchase Agreement." "Those three schools are Chantilly High School, Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, and Mason Crest Elementary School." "Each facility will undergo an independent evaluation to determine their structural, electrical, environmental, and economic capability to support solar panels, and will be replaced by a school yet to be determined if there are issues."
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McElveen. Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yes, thank you. I first want to thank very much facility staff, Mr. Plattenberg, Mr. Sneed, who doesn't seem to be here tonight, is that right? Oh, and he's about to retire, how dare he not show up tonight? And then Justin Moss, I don't know if Justin's here tonight, but I want to just give a shout-out to him as well, because I know he's been a really important part of all of the energy and renewable conversations that we've had. Thanks to our wonderful facility staff, we've gotten to the point where FCPS buildings are so efficient that we are, we are ready to change to renewable, to renewable sources. You know, they say the first thing you have to do is get as efficient as you can be. And, you know, we have more Energy Star-rated buildings than any other school system in the country. So we've done, we've done a great deal in that area. I want to thank the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors and county staff leadership for putting together, being willing to put out the RFP for a power purchase agreement for solar energy. If it were not for their willingness to do that and our ability to ride that contract, it would be much more difficult for the school system to do this at this point. So that has provided a golden opportunity, which I'm very glad we can jump on. I want to thank my colleagues on the school board for your commitment to leadership on this really critical issue of climate action. I've noticed that we are in this together, and that's really nice to see. I want to thank this community for making clear that this is a priority, in particular, the students. We've had so many students contact us and come to speak to us. We have some students down in Richmond today testifying before the General Assembly on some renewable bills, the Solar Freedom Bill. I think there were some parts of that that they were testifying about today down in the General Assembly. So their commitment, your commitment, you know, the next generation's commitment to action on this issue is incredibly motivating. You have to understand how important that student voice is to this board, especially on something that we know will affect you more than any of us and longer than any of us. This is the world you are inheriting even more than we are. I also want to thank the advocacy groups out there, like the Sierra Club and Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions. Your steadfast advocacy on this, the knowledge, the work that you do, the research, the conversations, the many conversations that you're willing to have with all of us to educate us and make sure we know what's possible, has been really extremely helpful. I would just say, you know, the argument, I guess, against doing this is that if you look at the entire public buildings owned by the county, in Fairfax County, that's all county buildings and school buildings, it only amounts to about 3% of the built environment in Fairfax County. Even though I feel like we're enormous with 200 buildings and a footprint the size of four pentagons, it's only 3% of the built environment in the county. So, you know, you might be tempted to say, "Well, we can't fix this problem all by ourselves," right? But is that the question we should be asking? I mean, we need to lead, right? And we, this community wants to lead, our students want us to lead. When you're facing a crisis, you do what you can with what you have. And with this pilot tonight, this school system and this school board are moving forward on that really important commitment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your second?
So I want to start out by thanking Ms. Hines for her leadership over many years on this issue. It's been a pleasure to, to finally see this through to another new beginning. And at the same time, also thank Mr. Plattenberg, Mr. Sneed, and Justin on the work that they have done. You know, when Mr. Plattenberg was first introduced to us, many of us saw that he had won a national award on, on issues of sustainability and, and capital improvements. And so this is just following through on that same mission that he's, he's worked on for a long time. So I'm glad we're, we're continuing to push, push the ball forward. This has been a long road, but as Pat said, we, as a district, now have 173 Energy Star buildings. That is the most in the country. It's an incredible achievement, and this is just the next step. We have also pioneered our Get to Green program. If folks have not visited our webpage, I think you will be amazed at the kind of work that we are doing in this area. You could spend all day on that Get to Green website, seeing, seeing all the different initiatives from recycling to farm to school, and now to solar. And another point I would make is that, like a number of things this board has done over the past few years, this has been an issue that the students have led on. And three, four, five years ago, they started coming to us in droves, asking us to move on this issue. And it has taken a while for us to act, but I am, the fact that we are now immortalizing this in our capital improvement plan for the first time means that in future years, we can only build on it. So Chantilly, TJ, and Mason Crest are just the start, I know all of us hope. And with that, I will turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. I have a few people that would like to speak to the amendment. Ms. Palchek, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I too want to thank Ms. Hines for her continued leadership on this effort, and for the, the groups and the students who helped us get here a first step. And to Mr. Plattenberg, thank you, and a couple of questions to clarify. So I know that I've had a few questions from my, my schools about why are there only three schools? And what are their criteria? And what are the kind of schools, what schools can be added moving forward? I wanted, A, if you could clarify for us, I believe what's pretty exciting about the RFP being put forward by our county is that not only will we be able to ride the contract, but really, any jurisdiction in the state supposedly will be able to do that. And that these are the first three schools named, but really, once that contract is in, it could really open up to many other schools being included. I think that was alluded to a little bit. So if you could clarify both for FCPS and for other school districts, what are some of the possibilities once the RFP comes back to us?
Absolutely, thank you, Ms. Palchek. You know, keep in mind, Fairfax County Public Schools was the leader and the innovator in solar arrays back both with TerraCenter and TerraSet. So when you look at where we have come in the past, and many of the board members mentioned this evening, Mr. McElveen, and certainly Ms. Hines and others, when you talk about where we go on the leading edge rather than the bleeding edge, the same applies here. We had been looking and working with Arlington County. Arlington County had tied theirs to the bond program, and that was something that we could not ride. And we had been reaching out for other avenues. We had had other firms come in, take a look at our facilities to give us an estimate as to where it would work. What are some of the challenges? What are some of the opportunities? What are some of the strengths and weaknesses and hurdles we might have to overcome? In the meantime, we were able to partner in this sojourn, this time-evolved evolutionary process, with all the interest groups working together. We were able to partner with the county, and they specifically wanted to identify a number of facilities. We wanted to go ahead and get the contract in place so that we could look at all of our facilities for a return, a payback, the cost efficiencies of them, and where it would be most cost beneficial, where we could create the most energy, if you will. So the county had preferred that we identified three. Well, we chose, out of the array that we had been working with three different firms, we had over 10 different facilities that we had looked at. We ended up with these three as the most optimum. Some of the conditions they looked at were, if they're going to put solar power on top of a building, the length, when was the roof redone? When was the last time the roof was redone? So there wouldn't be any disruption to the energy generated on top of the roof. So that process is one of the reasons why we ended up with the three that we're starting with. As was mentioned, this is a foundation, the foundation amongst which we begin to build, much like our very successful capital improvement program. And when referenced on the number of Energy Star schools... And when referenced on the number of Energy Star schools, a hundred percent of our Energy Star schools that are eligible are Energy Star certified. The rest are under renovation or other things that are going on with them. So it really is building that comprehensive approach to renewables, to sustainability. This also will allow, with the procurement, it will allow, it's my understanding, and it's currently going through the process, that's anticipated, the revised schedule that I received was that a contract award this June of this year will hopefully continue that tread that you spoke of, to allow others to ride on the success that the county is having with this procurement process, and we are just fortunate to be a partner with it. I hope that answers your questions.
Well, thank you. It's very exciting because I know we have many schools that are in the process of being renovated, will soon be renovated. We've had students ask why they're not included in this list. So come June, as my understanding, we'll be able to have more information and hopefully include more schools. So thank you so much to everyone who's worked on this. Very happy to support it.
Thank you, Ms. Palchak. With that, Ms. McLaughlin?
I just had wanted to make sure that we'd use this opportunity to help convey to the public that while it could be, the entire Board would like to wave a magic wand and put the solar panels on top of all two hundred of our school buildings, as Mr. Plattenberg was talking, it goes into so much more about what is the structure and the state of the roof. And so I want to express my appreciation to Ms. Hines as a native Californian who saw solar panels on our neighbors' homes as early as the nineteen seventies. The fact that we're now talking about doing this almost in two thousand and twenty is certainly a little later than I would have hoped for Fairfax County, but it is exciting. And I too want to echo how wonderful it's been, the number of students who've brought their very important voice to this conversation, and it's great to see them engaged on something that is very meaningful. Regardless of what percentage this might affect the overall structures here within Fairfax County, every effort that we can make to continue with getting to green-type ways of reducing carbon footprints is the type of leadership that I would like to see from Fairfax County School Board and certainly from our Board of Supervisors. So I see this as such a positive step tonight, and I'm excited to support it.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Darnack-Kofax.
My question was along the lines of what Ms. Palchak asked. And so, Mr. Plattenberg, thank you for explaining to us where we are and how we hope to move forward. As Mr. McElveen says, we are doing a lot of good things in the Get to Green initiative. And as he said, please explore our website to see what we are already doing. And just as my colleagues have said, thank you to our students who have taken leadership roles in this, and thank you to our colleagues for bringing us forward and getting it started in a small way, but it's a start.
Thank you, Ms. Darnack-Kofax. Mr. Tigner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to speak to student involvement, and also sort of a mantra that I've heard. It is a very significant, oh, yeah, sorry, it's a very significant thing that, you know, we feel like we're going up like that uphill battle because there's a lot to do, and it feels as if there's only little we've started with. But there's, the thing I've heard is, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. And by doing this, we're becoming part of that solution. So it might be the first couple of steps, but you know, it's like, you know, one small step, right? And one large step for mankind, that kind of thing. So hopefully, we can progress forward with that. But yeah, definitely, the student advocacy has been a big part. Whenever I've talked to students about it, it's definitely a very focused, arrowhead idea, like, yes, we want this, and this is something we're passionate about. I don't think I've ever met a kid who says, like, no, like, I necessarily don't care about my environment, which is an interesting thing because there's always two sides to every topic. So I'm really excited to see this going forward, and high hopes for what we can do in the future with it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tigner. Ms. Evans.
I thank you. I too want to thank Ms. Hines for bringing this forward and being so passionate about it, and from Mr. Plattenberg and his team for moving this forward and getting us started on sort of one small step towards doing our part for climate change. And I know we're thinking about having more conversation on that. I was certainly pleased that two of the first three are physically in Mason District, so that's great for our part of the county. I did have a question, and this actually was from a constituent. We have an addition going in at Justice High School, and I believe we have some roof projects as well. And the question that he had was whether this would provide an opportunity for more of these solar projects because we were going in and doing, in some cases, doing new roofs, and in some cases, and in the case of Justice High School, doing an addition.
That's a very good question. In fact, you know, I get that a lot in questions when I'm out speaking to the public about this. And I like what Mr. Tigner mentioned, you know. I've run over fourteen marathons, ultra marathon, fifty-mile relay, and two hundred mile relays, the Ragnar relays, and every one of those began with one step. And so when we talk about these things, and the question that you asked, that I am asked about schools we have under renovation, the designs that they currently have, those designs are based upon what we currently know. The timeline of this procurement and getting the company selected and then awarded as soon as we possibly can with the county will then inform us as to how we will be able to go ahead and provide for that structural analysis about what we do have that will accommodate it and what it will take in the future. Unfortunately, it becomes a timing issue for each of the individual projects, and as soon as we get this contract underway, we'll be able to shed a lot more light on that.
Okay. I think that's something for us to consider moving forward because when we do go back in, it would make sense for us to do an assessment whether this would be a good possibility. So thank you for that answer, and again, thank you for all the work that went into this.
And with that, I'll call for the vote. Would you like me to reread the amendment? Okay. Then all those in favor? And that vote is unanimous. I now call on Mr. Moon for an amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a rather lengthy motion, but I'm going to have to read all the way from beginning to the end, so please bear with me. I move to amend the main motion by increasing the cash flow request by an additional twenty-five million dollars, thereby increasing the yearly sale on school bonds to two hundred and five million dollars. This will allow FCPS to continue to accelerate planning for the following twenty elementary schools, two middle schools, two high schools, and one central office repurpose renovation project, with an estimated reduction of one hundred and fifty-eight temporary classrooms upon completion of the projects. Wakefield Forest Elementary, Lewis Archer Elementary, Crossfield Elementary, Mosby Woods Elementary, Barney Bray Elementary, Brammer Park Elementary, Brookfield Elementary, Lee's Corner Elementary, Armstrong Elementary, Willow Springs Elementary, Hunter Elementary, Drainfield Elementary, Cobron Elementary, Union Mill Elementary, Senna Ridge Elementary, Poplar Tree Elementary, Wipers Mill Elementary, Sangstow Elementary, Saratoga Elementary, Virginia Road Elementary, Franklin Middle School, Twain Middle School, Fort Church High School, Sennaville High School, and Dunloing Repurpose. In addition to these renovations, this infusion will include the funding for twenty-three capacity enhancements and the reduction of one hundred and eighty-four temporary classrooms for a total reduction of three hundred and forty-two temporary classrooms. Furthermore, this will allow completion of the two thousand and nine renovation queue by FY two thousand and twenty-eight, which is four years earlier than projected. As currently constructed, the CIP cash flows, cash flow assumes that two thousand and nine renovation queue projects would be completed by FY two thousand and twenty-three-two. The current additional, a twenty-five million dollar infusion will result in nineteen of thirty unfunded schools in the renovation queue being completed three years earlier in FY two thousand and twenty-nine. With the increased funding, the renovation cycle will still remain as thirty-seven years, but it will help us make greater strides toward the elimination of temporary classrooms.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Evans. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your motion?
In order to what I have read in the lengthy motion, I have a few other points to make. This motion is seeking an increase of annual capital funding amount from County Board of Supervisors by twenty-five million dollars so that we can have twenty-five million dollars. But this request is not anything new. As you can recall, the Board, this Board, voted last year to make a request for an increase by fifty million dollars. The Board of Supervisors only granted fifty percent of our request at the time. Even though I was grateful that Board of Supervisors gave us another twenty-five million dollars starting from this year, that is simply not adequate to meet our needs, and we should advocate for reasonable full funding. Our ten-year capital improvement program requires an annual average funding amount of two hundred and seventeen point five million dollars, but we currently only receive one hundred and eighty million dollars, which leaves us with a gap of thirty-seven point five million dollars per year. I am not seeking full thirty-seven point five at this time because I believe that we should use our existing excess capacity in some of our schools more effectively to reduce the funding gap. That may require some boundary adjustments for some of our schools, and I do fully expect that the Board will have an opportunities to discuss them. We are accountable to our taxpayers and our students to use our resources as efficiently as possible. Having said that, we also still have about eight hundred trailers being used as a classrooms with almost twenty thousand students studying there each and every day, and that is not acceptable. I know the staff has been working hard to provide us an improved plan to eliminate them, and I look forward to having a robust discussion on the staff's plan once it is presented to us. Increased CIP funding and more efficient use of excess capacities will certainly help us to remove the trailers. I'm clearly aware of the fact that we should keep the county's debt ratio under ten percent to maintain the triple-A bond rating. The debt ratio is currently expected to reach nine point one eight percent in two thousand and twenty-five. The additional capital funding amount of twenty-five million dollars will increase the ratio, but only by zero point oh six percent. So with the additional twenty-five million dollars of bond sales, the ratio may reach nine point two four percent, but still well under ten percent. With that, I would like to ask my colleagues support of my motion.
Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your second?
I would, Madam Chair. Thank you. I'm very pleased to again second this amendment with Mr. Moon for increased spending authority to help ease our large and growing capital needs. I do want to thank the Board of Supervisors and congratulate them on stepping up to increase our funding, increase it by twenty-five million, which was half of the request that we made last year. And we are very grateful for their increased help. So it shouldn't come off as ungrateful that we still request their help again so we can move forward faster with our capital needs. So we request a second addition this year. Our school system has grown significantly in the past decade, and it keeps on growing. And if you look at the amount that we were able to use for capital spending, the one hundred and fifty-five million dollars in two thousand and five, and if you increase this just for inflation for two thousand and eighteen, that would have increased to a hundred and ninety-nine million, so close to two hundred million, a hundred and ninety-nine million, beyond where we are now, even with the infusion last year. At the same time, during that period of time, from two thousand and five to two thousand and eighteen, we had more than twenty-four thousand more students come into our school system. That's more than most school systems in America, that increase in students. So we have to accommodate those students. We have to add additions, we have to put in, create new schools. So as time has gone on, we have gotten farther and farther behind with our renovations. Our renovations are supposed to be done every twenty-five years, and now we are at, I believe, Mr. Plattenberg, is it every thirty-seven? Is that our renovation cycle? And that simply isn't acceptable. We have not only students, many, many students in trailers, but we also have students that are waiting and waiting and waiting for adequate renovations. We do know that the facility does make a difference in learning, that students learn better when they're in modern facilities that are equipped for not only safety and security, but for the increase in technology. We need to do this for our students, and we need to do it in a quicker way. So I'm very happy to support this amendment, and I do ask that my colleagues support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I have a number of people that would like to speak to this amendment, starting with Ms. Palchak.
Thank you. I may come back. I wanted to start with a couple of questions, and I want to thank Ms. Evans and Mr. Moon and staff for working on this. And I really appreciate seeing the Dunloing Repurpose added on here. I know we are seeing quite a bit of growth and not a lot of room to even look at boundary changes in the Dunloing-Tysons area because there's no place to put our new students. I did want to ask a few questions. First of all, Mr. Plattenberg, do we, would there be an impact? Because I believe currently we have a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars a year deferred maintenance. Would speeding up some of these renovations and temporary classrooms, does that have an impact on the operating budget that we're currently using for maintenance costs?
Absolutely.
Is there any way to analyze that? I know you've been working on this a little bit, very recently.
Yes, Ms. Palchak, we can provide you with that information, but any acceleration of this program definitely impacts in a positive way the snowballing effect of deferred maintenance that you referred to. We've reported that out, what that total amount is over time, and I can definitely give you something right, but it is significant. You think about the heating, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and the current ADA requirements and bringing things up to code. Some of our older facilities, people talk about safety and security and vestibules, all of those things are what's addressed when we go into a renovation.
Because in addition, my understanding is that a lot of our timeframes are based on regular use, and our school system with sometimes seventeen hours of use a day actually goes beyond that. And so we really are wearing and tearing through our buildings, through our use, community use, very rapidly.
That's an excellent point. We've shown an increase of twenty percent in our community use of our facilities.
An increase in twenty percent, okay. That's good to know. I appreciate that. And I know one of my questions, you spoke to it a little bit, Mr. Moon, but before I get to it, for Mr. Plattenberg, I appreciate here we have, overall, it looks like if this were to pass, if I'm reading it correctly, our renovation queue would be finished four years earlier than projected. Do you know, per school project, and an elementary school will be different than high school, so per elementary, middle, and high school, on average, how much faster we would see, you know, Mosby Woods, Falls Church projects completed?
Absolutely, and we can reflect that in the upcoming CIP, as we certainly would. Not only would you see the acceleration of that, but I think the point that was made by Ms. Evans and others, when you look at the inflation and you look at the cost, the actual efficiency of getting it done sooner than later is rather significant.
But are we talking days, months, years, per school? Just, do we have a sense?
I'd have to follow up with you with that exact amount because I wouldn't want to mislead anybody.
That would be wonderful. I appreciate. And then finally, I guess this is for you, Mr. Moon and Ms. Evans. So you shared that, I know there's a concern about the county's debt ratio and proposing this. A, well, you shared the numbers. B, have you had any conversations with our counterparts in the county or Dr. Bray-Brennan and your staff? Do we have a sense of, you know, here we're asking for something, what it means, the impact, and where they stand on this?
I would tell you, I have had some initial conversations with the county executive that the School Board was interested in an additional twenty-five million. I am really proud of the collaboration we've had. It was his first year here, and working together, we, with your support, we did get what we had for over a decade, that one fifty-five, finally we moved it. So we made progress last year. I don't want to-
I don't want to speak for the county executive. We've certainly shared with him there is interest, but we haven't had any final discussions or final resolution to whether there's the capacity from the Board of Supervisors and the county executive to recommend that in this year's budget.
And Mr. Plattenberg, is there a capacity on your team? Should this, one concern I've heard, should this be passed, that we have the ability to speed up these projects and take them on more quickly?
Well, our whole program is built upon the staff that supplement the work or paid for as a portion of the work. If there isn't the work, would they reduce the staff? If there is work, we increase the staff.
So we do have the capacity?
We do have the capacity to accomplish what we're doing right now. We would obtain additional staff if we increased our capacity, just like we did with the additional 25.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's very exciting. I look forward to hearing more and seeing some of the questions asked today.
Thank you, Ms. Palchak. Ms. McGlothlin?
I just want to thank Mr. Moon in particular for your work on this. I know that as board members, we've all been concerned about looking at the number of, as we call them, temporary classrooms, trailers, learning cottages, pick the name, but as parents and students, we know it's not an optimal setting for students to learn in. And so you're taking the lead and really helping to work with staff and fashion this language on something that I know so many of us are supportive of this effort. I'm certainly excited to see some of my Bragg district schools are going to directly benefit from it, so certainly happy to support what you've brought forward this evening. But again, we all have so much that we juggle on our plates, and so it's appreciated when our colleagues take on a particular initiative like this, and it's just going to benefit the entire county. So, well done.
Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Moon, for bringing this forward along with Ms. Evans. My colleagues will recall that last year I brought forward an amendment to fully fund the backlog, which would have called for a total of 271 million in bond funding a year as opposed to 205. And I have not brought forward a similar motion this year because I do want to recognize the spirit of compromise that goes into this and the progress that has been made. But let me be clear that my support for this has the same sentiment as it would if I were bringing forward an amendment that called for the full funding, because I think all of us recognize here that 37-year renovation cycle is completely unacceptable. Again, 271 is what we need. We're asking for 205 million. When you look at our number of kids in trailers, it reaches 20,000. That's about the number of kids that go to Richmond City Public Schools that we are educating in trailers. It's approaching the size of Arlington County Public Schools. If you go back to the 1950s, at which point we had a similar capital crunch, you will notice that we had 2,000 kids in trailers at that time. The community outcry was tremendous. We are not seeing that among our community today, and I think that's just because everyone is resigned to the fact that we've been in these temporary classrooms for so many years. And I think it's incumbent upon this board and all boards in this county, frankly, to raise this issue in the public consciousness and say that it's unacceptable. School infrastructure is not just a Fairfax County problem right now. It is a national issue, and I'm hopeful that once our government becomes unshut down, that we will finally take up infrastructure as a national priority, and school infrastructure in particular, because this is not limited to Fairfax County. It's certainly a problem elsewhere in Virginia and elsewhere in the country, particularly in rural areas. So Fairfax County can be a microcosm of the country and continue to underfund our infrastructure, or we can be a national model, and I'm hopeful that this is just one more small step in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. I have Mr. Moon for a brief go back.
Just quickly. First of all, to give you a frame of reference, when you talk about increasing the number of students by 24,000 students, that 24,000, if there was a school district in Virginia with 24,000, that would be 12th largest school district. So that's a lot of students that, with our funding increase that we have endured, that is why we have close to 20,000 student trailers. As to $271 million figure Mr. McElveen was referencing, as I recollect, that there was a number from the last year, and that may still be the number if we did perhaps 30-year renovation cycle, but if we do 37-year cycle, which is not acceptable to me and most of us, I believe that for the next 10-year period, yearly requirement is 217. So asking, there is a funding gap at this point, about 37.5 million, and I'm only asking 25, believing that by using an existing excess capacity, we may be able to perhaps reduce or eliminate the funding gap entirely.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I would like to take the chair's privilege and just address your amendment, and I appreciate your vigilance in keeping us focused on getting rid of trailers in Fairfax County. The temporary cottages, be they trailers or modulators, is something that this board all shares as a priority. However, I want to make sure people understand that this amendment only keeps us treading in place at a 37-year cycle. It is not something that actually allows us to truncate that cycle to the 25 years that would be ideal. And so when we look at this amendment, and I have wrestled with it because I do, I'm very concerned about our debt ceiling and the cost of debt, as well as the need to take a strategic focus to addressing our capacity needs, our trailers, and our renovation cycles. So there are actually multiple issues that we have to address within our CIP, and that's why this 25 million is important just to keep us in place. It doesn't actually accelerate movement. It moves it by four years, but at the same time, all those other buildings continue to age. As far as some background on this, there are currently 754 trailers in which actual classroom activity goes on. The majority of those trailers are used at the elementary school level, with 505 of them, and 83 at the middle and 162 temporary classrooms at our high school level. And so when we look at our youngest kids growing up in school in trailers, this is something that we should have a strategic focus. I am looking forward to greater conversation between our board and the Board of Supervisors on our capital improvement plan and why these priorities are necessary so that we can have a robust discussion. I would hope that the superintendent and his team come to that joint meeting with more detail on exactly how we use the last 25 million. And I want to urge people to understand that although we increased our spending by 25 million as a result of the partnership with the county last year, our costs have also gone up. This trade wars that are going on has increased the cost of steel and has increased pressures on the overall building cost. So having said that, I have a couple of questions. One is, Mr. Moon, with the $25 million increase in the CIP, I understand that there's a $2.5 million cost per year in our cost of building. Are you planning on making an amendment to our budget?
Once this passes, we'll have you a part of a discussion, yes.
Okay. Additionally, Mr. Plattenberg, last year we added 25 million. Were you able to absorb the 25 million this year?
I don't, I'm sorry, could you clarify, absorb the 25 million?
Were you able to actually, are you spending?
Yeah, we are advancing the planning, as was discussed in last year's motion and board comment. We did say that, you know, people look for shovel-ready, they want to see things happening immediately. It's like all of our expectations. We want to plant the seed in the morning and mow the grass at night, right? The reality of these things is the time it takes for the design and permitting processes is at least 18 to 24 months, and some of these jobs, depending on the size, as you mentioned. But we were able to accelerate some of that. We still are working on obtaining additional staffing and working with HR and budget for that to really ramp that up to the full level. In fact, that's exactly what my colleague and I were just making sure we were talking about, to make sure we were doing. I know Mr. Moon has been actively inquiring about this as well.
So if there's an extra cost associated with this bond of 2.5 million, but by accelerating our renovation cycle, we can cut deferred maintenance, do you think that we can absorb that 2.5 million?
The bond indebtedness, if you're speaking about how they're financing, it's a different, you know, you talk about the operational effect and impact, and the county's bond indebtedness and capital projects are all in what's called Fund 8, the construction fund. That is a totally separate fund than the operating fund. The funding, the financing, and the debt relief of that is all done based upon bonds and bond issuance. So I don't think it's one where you could just absorb it in the other, but we'd have to work with our friends at the county, Joe Monduro and his talented staff, to see exactly what our opportunities are.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Plattenberg.
So, Madam Chair, just to clarify, to your question, that, thinking again, that as Mr. Plattenberg stated, that county's debt service is not a part of the transfer. County's Board of Supervisors always consider what they have to pay as a debt service for school system as their contribution to our operation, but that does not actually become part of the transfer itself. So by requesting for another $25 million, which you require $2.5 million annual debt service, county will have to set aside, if they approve our request, another $2.5 million to a separate account. But that's not going to be a part of the transfer to us, and that's not going to affect our operating fund.
Thank you, Mr. Moon, for that clarification. Ms. Palchak.
So just to clarify your clarification, Mr. Moon, it does not affect our operating fund, but that 2.5 million is out of the county's operating fund, correct? Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen, do you? No? Okay. So with that, I will call for the vote. Does anybody want me to reread it?
No.
Great, thank you. So all those in favor of Mr. Moon's amendment? And that is unanimous. That motion passes. Ms. Evans?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are we back to the main motion now?
Yes, ma'am, we are back to the main motion.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure if you wanted comments on now or at a different time, but I did have a few comments and a few questions on the CIP as a whole. I do want to say I appreciate all the work that's gone into making this such a thorough document and that does improve year after year, and this is a great guideline for our capital improvement projects. In this, we try mightily to make the best decisions on our capital dollars, even when we know that there's not nearly enough to go around for our capital needs. And as I said earlier, in connection with the amendment, our school system has grown significantly in the past decade and will continue to grow, creating a need for new schools, additions to existing schools, and use of modulators and trailers, which is less than ideal. I do look forward to a more robust conversation on boundaries in the spring. That will be incumbent upon us to use the capacity that we have as efficiently as possible. And part of this conversation will need to be creating better socioeconomic balance among our schools, as we have seen an increase in socioeconomic resegregation in our communities and in our schools. And while we might want to say, well, that has to do with the impact of housing patterns, it has to do with aging housing stock, it has to do with family choices, this board has an obligation to create the best school environment we can for every child, and that isn't going to be done with a system where there have and have not schools. So that is a big task that this board has in front of us. And of course, that's a larger issue than boundaries and capital needs. In connection with boundaries, I do have one specific boundary issue that I did want to raise, and I wanted to ask Mr. Plattenberg for some information on this. On page 46, we do have a list of our priority boundaries coming up, and I did want to make the point that I hope that the Glen Forest Elementary School boundary change could be started as quickly as possible. It is in the CIP, and it is scheduled for this spring, and I would urge that we get started as quickly as possible to have a limited boundary with the schools, with one or two neighboring schools, so that we can get relief for that school quickly. Just as a reminder for my colleagues, this school now has 1,100 students. It's an elementary school with 1,100 students, occupying a space. We did get the report about what the capacity, the core capacity is without the modulators. There are a couple of very old modulators at this school, but if you take that out, the core capacity was originally intended for 760 kids, and now there are 1,100 there. So I do think that it's, we also have a very difficult traffic problem there with 18 buses going in and out of a very difficult traffic pattern there, and the school is concerned about safety issues as well. If you look at the capacity without the modulators there, it's now at 140% capacity, and the PTO there is asking us to make this a priority. So my question for you, Mr. Plattenberg, is since this is in the CIP, just how soon can we start the scoping on this?
Yeah, it is mentioned on that page, and it's discussed the spring, thank you. It discussed in the spring of 2019 to begin. And our policy is in accordance with the Policy 8130 and also the Regulation 8130, which describes the procedures associated with going out to gaining the community involvement.
Well, we already have had some community involvement, and so I guess when we say spring, can we expect to see scoping in February and March? What is the schedule for some of our priority?
Spring would not be February, I can tell you that much. It's still, we're still doing snow calls.
Wishful thinking on my part.
But certainly, we know the urgency, and we've known your advocacy on that. Initial conversations have not been really in aligned with conformance. They've been a little, I would call it more organic because of community concerns that have been raised to you, and we've had those community meetings. But the actual boundary and scoping process that does begin in the spring is something that Planning Office, when they finish with the analysis and the adoption of the CIP by this governing body, should we have that this evening, and then it's forwarded on to the county for their inclusion in their CIP? It then takes a turn by the time that that's usually completed, and then we move forward, that's when we're into the spring. But it definitely is in the spring, and it is before the summer, and that time is a coming.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And with that, those were my only questions. I did, I would be remiss if I didn't make a few comments also on this, the last CIP that I will be voting on in my time on the board, about my deep regret that we remain so far behind in renovating our schools, and in particular Falls Church High School, which is finally in the planning stage for renovation, but it still remains years away from completion. We bear the responsibility for the failure to change this school from a school that doesn't have a sprinkler system, a school that doesn't meet the latest ADA requirements because it's grandfathered into outdated, decades-old standards, and had a gym wall collapse, and has had trouble with the technology at that school because of outdated wiring. The CIP also shows that in only a few years, this will be one of our most overcrowded schools, and we now have trailers there as well. So anything that we can do to move that along, although I will say that I've had multiple conversations with Mr. Plattenberg and our wonderful staff to see if there's anything we could do to accelerate the renovation of this wonderful school, the last of our legacy schools that were built in the 1960s. But I'm told that at this were built in the 1960s. But I'm told that, that at this point, it's in planning, we're going as fast as we can with the design. We need to have permitting. We have new stormwater management issues that might further delay it, so that it's really can't be sped up at this point. We can simply keep going and hope for the best in terms of improved funding. But at this point, the timeline shows it being completed in late 2025, which is still seven years away. At the same time, our other legacy high schools will have been finished years earlier. And I do have a grave concern about the equity of that, something that was determined by previous boards in 2008 and that we were not able to turn around. I will pause for a moment just because I've mentioned some of the issues at this school. This is a wonderful school, despite the fact that we have some, some facilities issues there in great need of a renovation. It is a wonderful jewel with amazing academics, students, and staff. So despite the need for renovation, they did deserve better, and we have made them wait too long. So the only other thing on my last CIP, Mr. Plattenberg, is to thank you and your amazing facilities, staff. You do great work with, with many, many limitations, not just funding, but other requirements as well. So you, you do amazing work. And I want to thank you, Jeff Plattenberg, and also Kevin Sneed in his final, final month, Jessica Gillis, and, and your entire team. You do excellent work. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I also want to thank you, Mr. Plattenberg, and, you know, all of facilities' staff. I don't know if everybody realizes what an enormous and complex business this is, just the facilities part of the school system with over 200 buildings and, you know, 189, how many students do we have? 187,000 students, 25,000 employees. It's, it's an enormous business. And you're just a very creative, dedicated, hardworking. We always know we're getting the best here in Fairfax County, and that's what the community expects and deserves. I wanted to also thank our Facilities Planning Advisory Committee, FPAC. That was a great idea. It was, it started before my time, and it has become a really helpful and useful group to the board and to facilities. And because of a lot of their work and comments and suggestions, that's one of the reasons that the CIP just keeps getting better every year. It's easier to read. It's, it's full of more information. I want to thank especially Mr. Plattenberg and the folks in facilities for the new section on, and the environment, on environmental sustainability and renewables, renewables. Sorry. The school board asked last spring for a report, and we got that report with the CIP and also a summary of it in the CIP. And I think it's wonderful that that information on energy sustainability and environmental sustainability is in the CIP, because that means that every year, we, we reconsider it, and we have a chance, the public has a chance to have a public hearing to see what we're doing and what our plans are. And so I really, I want to thank you very much for that decision. I think it was a good one. I'll just close by adding my comments about boundaries. I think here I am in my seventh year, and I have to say, we have not, in my time on the board, we have not had a major boundary change done. Small ones here and there. But I think we all recognize that we're kind of at a seismic point now, where there are just so many places across the county where it's just irresponsible for us to not make some changes. And so we have to do that. We want to, our goals always have to be equity, integration, and responsibility to the taxpayers. Because, you know, when, when the taxpayers look at our, our map, our heat map, and they see that we've got heavily overcrowded schools right next to schools that have capacity, it is, that makes it harder for us to keep making the argument that we need more funding. We do need more funding because our renovation cycle is too long. But we, we do, we, I mean, we, we owe it to the kids to get them out of trailers, and we owe it to the community to make sure that we're using our space wisely. I hope that this board can do as much as we can to set up the next board with a comprehensive boundary adjustment process that is transparent, is well-informed, and is guided by the need to ensure excellence and equity in every school across the county.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Palchek?
Yes, thank you. I also want to thank staff for your work on this, the CIP and our FPAC committee. I will be voting in favor for the CIP, of the CIP, because it provides needed capacity relief in many parts of the county, especially here in Providence District. There are several important projects and initiatives that will be funded in the near future. Affecting Providence families, these include renovations at Oakton High School and Falls Church High School, Frost Middle School and Mosby Woods Elementary School, as well as an addition at Madison High School, and boundary studies at Shreve Wood and Pine Spring Elementary Schools. In addition, it includes funding for an elementary school in the Fairfax-Oakden area, where there is need for additional capacity. A site that is being currently considered is the Blake Lane Park. There are still a number of pending questions around this proposed site. These include issues related to the dog park, safety, traffic and parking, community access to the grounds, pyramid enrollment trends, boundaries, environmental impact, and more. After listening to feedback from our community at our public meeting last week, and I want to thank Mr. Plattenberg, Mr. Sneed, and staff for attending that meeting, I've had several extensive conversations with the superintendent and his staff. As a result of these conversations, due to the complexities and lack of clarity on a range of issues, it's my understanding that it will take staff additional time to address the outstanding questions. I've been informed the processing time could take up to a year. And I wanted to know if that information is correct, Mr. Plattenberg?
Absolutely, Ms. Palchek. I mean, some of the things that you mentioned when you talk about the complexity of this project, when we started taking a look at it, not only with the feedback with the community, but we delved into it further. There are pyramid implications, there are split feeder implications, there's City of Fairfax school board implications, there were VDOT, there were safety concerns, there were traffic concerns, all the things that you mentioned, and then more. So for us, from a staff perspective, it's going to take us a good while to really develop a way forward with this that is in fact aligned with the policy comments that were made by Ms. Hines and others about transparency and communication. So yes, ma'am.
Okay, I appreciate that. I also want to ensure that we have a clear and transparent plan, as we've discussed, and also the process for communication with all the stakeholders, including surrounding community members, families that may be impacted by a boundary change, as many of them see their children in trailers year after year. I'd like staff to return with more information about this process, to include the timeline, our community outreach plan. I know this is a very special case, very unique in, in the sites we've looked at, and any future considerations that would need to be made by the school board or any other governing bodies. And finally, while there's not a change in this CIP, my understanding is that we can have an updated timeline reflected in next year's CIP. So I don't know, Mr. Plattenberg, at this point, if you're able to give an approximate time, timeframe of when you think we'll be able to have plans, and some of the, the questions that, you know, I think for past month or so, we've been waiting to be answered.
Yeah, in terms of the complexity of this, and a specific timeline, I, I don't think I'd be able to give you an exact timeline. But definitely, your comments about it being reflected in the upcoming CIP. We're currently working with the Office of Communications to go ahead and flesh out further some of the communication articulation, what has gone on. And as I said, once we get into some of those more complex elements that we spoke of, not only with FC DOT, with VDOT, with Fairfax County Department of Transportation, excuse me, and the Virginia Department of Transportation, and the traffic study and so forth, all of that as it unfolds, we'll be more communicative about what we'll be looking at, and, and some of those other elements, and developing a true timeline forward. There is a fully transparent process that is covered by regulation and policy, as I mentioned, 8130 and 8120. And if you look, and you can see them online under the school board search, under policies and regulations, they do articulate the transparent process about community input and feedback, and our procedures associated with reaching out to all impacted known communities. But again, we have to identify what those known communities are, and yet that will take a little more time.
Right. No, I appreciate it. Because this is, you know, as you've mentioned, involves several players, not just the school board. I, I hope that we can include that in the work of those governing bodies. So with, with that understanding in mind, I, I can support the CIP. I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, and especially adding the energy section. These are complex issues. We have overcapacity, we have student growth. We also have to take into consideration the boundaries and the studies that will be coming forward. So I appreciate your work on this, and my board members' thoughtful comments and feedback on, on what we've seen in the CIP. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. I also want to thank all of our facility staff, Mr. Plattenberg, Mr. Sneed. This is his last CIP. Ms. Gillis, the tremendous amount of work that goes into this, I want to thank my colleagues for the amendment on solar renewable energy. I was very, very pleased to support that, and for the ask for more money for our CIP. Mr. Plattenberg, I just have one question. I did get several calls from the community. When will there be an opportunity for the community to talk about the growth at Tysons? Will this occur within the next five-year window, or will this be beyond after substantial completion of Tysons?
Well, as many, that's an excellent question. As many people know, the Tysons program had a number of tenant buildings that were supposed to be built out. Many of them were supposed to be completed by now. As with any plan moving forward with the county, we monitor and incorporate that within each of our CIPs. The growth and the impact that we're seeing as a result, and the corresponding or correlated proffers associated with that based upon our student impact, are included in upcoming CIPs. We show, for example, the impact in that region at some of the schools already. So we will be developing, and I have pressed Mr. Sneed before he leaves, to develop a way forward to address some of the overcrowding in a number of different regions, and to include that one as well.
And I also, as much as we don't like to talk about trailers and modulators, I am grateful for that type of support when that is, as while we're waiting for other longer-term solutions. So thank you for at least enabling us to have enough classroom space. Thanks.
Ms. Darnack-Kofax?
Thank you. I, I again will say kudos to the staff that I had mentioned earlier at the start of this conversation. But I did have a question. Ms. Evans, did I misunderstand you? Were you acting, asking for an administrative boundary scoping? Ms. Evans?
Not an administrative one, no. A regular boundary, but just one with the going to the next-door school. That's not an administrative boundary, no. It would require the, it would require the regular scoping and going to the board and all of that.
So because, well, I, I ask that because I know Dr. Braybrand had made the recommendation to suspend making any administrative boundary changes in the 18, 19 school year until we can engage in a greater dialogue regarding revisions to this. So I guess, I guess I just have questions. Well, I, maybe this is a conversation for, for later, because I, not certain, Mr. Plattenberg, what's, I, I just need clarification on what do you think you agreed to, because I'm.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, in any of these processes, when we talk about, and as was stated on, on page 46, you know, the, the work planned forward, when we go out and we do the scoping, that's when the actual element that you, that is being discussed about right now is really further fleshed out. Because our demographers can go ahead and look at things from the metrics that we use as planners. We do it based upon what we call SPAZ, Special Planning Areas, which are really community-driven, and it shows what we might recommend, which may make no sense to the community. It's by going out to the community meetings and having those scoping meetings with them, that we gain the insight about where the total impact is. And I think Ms. Evans was alluding to the fact that we've had meetings, community meetings, I know Mr. Zulaga, Dr. Zulaga, and Ms. Evans has had multiple meetings with the community, and received feedback about different things, such as program, modulators, and so forth and the like. I mean, that's nice, that's good information, but that really doesn't get into the scoping piece. That really, I think, further defines and delineates what you're asking for. Whether it would be something that would be a small, limited number of individuals that would be affected, and therefore fall into that basically held-on-to-process of the administrative, or if it would be a larger scoping that would be brought back by staff. I couldn't tell you right now the total impact of the area, of the region, because we haven't done that scoping yet. It would be guesstimating on my part.
Okay. Well, that, that just gives me pause, because it could be administrative, it could be larger. I think we, as, as following Dr. Braybrand's recommendations, had, had talked about not having those kind of administrative changes throughout this year until there was more conversation. And so, so that part, those comments just give me pause. I just wanted to, to say that to Ms. Evans, that I'm concerned about, about that, because we have, as a board, been talking about the larger issues because of the interconnectedness of the county, and looking at equity issues overall. So we had kind of put the brakes on, on some of the administrative changes because of that, because it.
If I could respond just for a minute, it can't be an administrative boundary change. If we're going to have enough students, an administrative boundary change wouldn't, is a, is a small number by definition, correct, Mr. Plattenberg?
Right. It's 10%.
Right. And, and we're looking at more than that.
I see that Dr. Braybrand would like to respond to this conversation.
Yeah, I know the conversation's going back and forth and just, you know, what I'd say is the scoping ultimately determines how big. Right now, the scoping involved is far broader than what would fall under administrative boundary change, which would only be if the threshold was a certain small percentage. You are correct. I have recommended that we do not move forward in the administrative boundary changes, nor would I, even if Mr. Plattenberg brought back that recommendation, I would want to have had that broader discussion with the board before I would move forward. And I intend to honor that promise.
Thank you for that clarity. I do appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Darnack-Kofax. Ms. Keys-Gamar?
Well, I think some of my questions may have just been answered by Dr. Braybrand. I, in my opening remarks, I think I was trying to speak to this very thing, because I know a number of my colleagues have brought forth schools within their districts that they felt perhaps could benefit from some type of boundary change. But I, I agree with Ms. Hines, we're at that point where we really need to have a more comprehensive discussion. And so I am in full support of Dr. Braybrand's position.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar. And I would remind my fellow colleagues that we are continuing that discussion, and we will have a more robust discussion about the goals of boundary changes, and that, we've got two meetings scheduled, one in February and one in early March, to begin that discussion. And I look forward to having it with all of you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have a couple of lights, and I want to know if you are requesting an opportunity to speak. Okay. Now with that, I will read the main motion. I move that the board approve the fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Program as amended. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. The bill, or the motion passes. I now call on Ms. Hines for a follow-on motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the board directs the chair to work with Fairfax County Chair Sharon Bolivar to schedule a joint work session on climate action with the goal of establishing a joint task force with staff, board, and community representation for further work. The board also directs the chair to suggest the following goals as agenda items for that joint task force work. A, a 2030-2050 carbon freedom goal, and a climate and energy action plan to reach that goal. B, a climate change, community resilience plan that includes schools. C, a dedicated funding strategy for renewable energy and energy efficiency, and clean transportation investments to include public, private, and nonprofit sources. D, a published list of specific county and schools' renewable energy, capital, and transportation projects updated regularly. E, the Climate Action Task Force. E, the climate action task force work will include direct testimony from outside energy and climate experts. F, review and recommendations for workforce development in the renewable energy sector in collaboration with FCPS, higher education providers, and industry partners.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Palchak. Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Well, first, I have to thank our Chair, Karen Corbett Sanders, very much, and the Board of Supervisors Chair, Sharon Boliva, because we would not be even having this conversation if it weren't that our two leaders have already had other conversations about this and have laid the groundwork. And I feel confident that because our leaders are committed to this, we will be able to do this. And so I want to thank Ms. Corbett Sanders very much for her leadership on this. These, I just want to say, these are just suggestions for the agenda that the joint task force could work on, just to let the Board of Supervisors know what the concerns are from the school systems and the school board's perspective. I am happy to answer any questions about these items from board members. We did not have an opportunity to have a work session discussion about this because we ran out of time at our CIP work session. So I'm happy to talk about any of these. And I would just add that one of the things that I didn't talk about when we were talking about the amendment on the solar pilot, the solar PPA pilot, this is also about fiscal responsibility. I think we all know that the tipping point is coming when fossil fuels are more expensive than renewables and that when the consequences of climate change will increasingly affect our lives in many ways. And we must be prepared. And I think that's what this joint work with the county is all about. We want to continue to lead as the leading voices of this community. It's our responsibility. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Palchak?
Yes, thank you. I also want to thank Ms. Hines for leading on this again and partnering with me and our Chair, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Chairman Boliva for their partnership on this efforts. Because as we know, it really is one of those areas where we have to do this together. And just as we passed the One Fairfax policy, and now as the Board of Supervisors has just launched their beginning input and work on their strategic plan, this is an area where I think it is timely that we start to address. I do appreciate that we've created some recommendations. They don't have to be addressed, but I think these are issues we've heard from our schools, from advocates. It includes the education piece and the renewable energy sector workforce development, which I think is critical and really talks to the future of our county and our ability to provide for the industry. But also looks at the different areas, from funding to having true action plans and goals. So I know, as we mentioned earlier, between the schools and the county, we're only about 3% of the emissions. But I think that this can look at both leading by example, but providing an atmosphere that attracts and supports every sector in the county to focus on our climate and our environment. So very excited to focus on this. I look forward to the work ahead and to your leadership. Let us know how we can help, Ms. Corbett Sanders. And looking forward to the actual task force. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchak. Do I have anybody else who would like to speak to the follow-on motion? And I will just say a few words. I am very excited about this follow-on motion. A lot, as you mentioned, there have been a lot of conversations, not only with our community advocates, but with the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. And when we talk about this, I look at this as being modeled on the very successful work that has been done in the SCPT, which we have Ms. Darnak Kovacs and Ms. McLaughlin on the SCPT. And it was because of the work on the SCPT that we ended up with the One Fairfax policy and a joint priority for early pre-K, or for pre-K. And so with this work, I see this as a One Fairfax for our focus on energy and changing or bending the curve for CO2. So I very much appreciate that. I also want to comment that tonight is the appropriate night for this, when we talk about the workforce development. Because we honored the career and technical education professionals in this county. And this is part of our CTE work because the wave of the future is in this work area. And so I am very optimistic that the boards working together can make great things happen and we can bend the trajectory that we all are concerned about on CO2 consumption. I also hope that Dr. Braybrand, with your proposal for increasing staffing for our academies, will be looking at our academies introducing new curriculum in this area because we know that there will be a lot of jobs in this area. So thank you very much. And with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of, let me read it. On the follow-on motion. Thank you. All those in favor of the follow-on motion. And that is unanimous. So that motion passes. I now call on Ms. Strauss for a consideration of amendment to the state and federal legislative program.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to add the following position statement as an amendment to the Fairfax County School Board's state and federal legislative program, originally adopted by the board on November 19, 2018. This is the proposed language. The Fairfax County School Board supports changing the date of the primary election held in June from the second Tuesday in June to the third Tuesday in June. And I will speak to that after a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. Mr. House, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah. Sort of interestingly, we actually discussed this as an addition to our legislative program and somehow it wasn't in. Because of the concern, most people realize that all of our schools are used as polling places. That's just the way it has to be in Northern Virginia. And because of our tightened security and the great care that we take in individuals coming in and out of our schools, it is more comfortable for our schools, and I think also for the voters, particularly in a primary season, if we expect a lot of voters, if that the primary and the vote can take place when we are not in session. It is important that the voters do not feel constrained in their ability to get in and out of the building. And it's important that our teachers, our children, and our parents are not concerned about the, obviously, the traffic that occurs when we are a polling station. So for that reason, and I know our Board of Elections would also prefer if during the election in June, which is held, I guess, every year, in Virginia, we have elections all the time, that at this primary time, that it would be held at a time when we are not in school and reminding our colleagues that in the regular election cycle in November, that is always planned as a holiday for students. It tends to be a workday for teachers. But again, to facilitate the ease of voting, in November, we do not hold school for students. So we would like to be able to carry in that tradition for the primary season in June as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your second?
Just to make sure that since, if the law changes, it's not going to become effective until July. So it does not affect this year's primary.
I believe that is correct. It is too late, yes. All of those primaries have been set. This would be for the 2020...
Starting with the presidential primary.
Primary, and it's likely to be a lot of activity. And we certainly want to encourage everyone to have exercised their right to vote without feeling as though they have to be stopped to say, are you here to vote? Are you a parent? Are you a student or a child? It would be more comfortable for everybody.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Moon, are you planning on speaking? No? Ms. Palchak?
Yes, well, partly I wanted to clarify what Mr. Moon brought up as the liaison to the calendar committee. This is something we've looked at. And I want to clarify that not only would it not go into effect until July, but we're, next year is presidential primary, which is a different schedule. So we're actually coming back to the board to consider being closed for the presidential primary in March. And also so that this was not really going to affect until school year 2020, 2021. Just wanted to clarify that. And that from those committee meetings, we have heard concerns definitely around student safety, but in addition from principals, especially in elementary schools, about the huge disruption to their school day, the education of students during that day. So that is primary. I know there are some concerns about how this may affect voter turnout. You know, hopefully, we can have holidays and other ways to look at how our state looks in the future. But while this is in effect, that we are in school and the elections are held in so many of our schools, I think as a governing body of our school system, it is just critical that we ensure safety and the functioning of our schools as our first priority.
Thank you, Ms. Palchak. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
I just want to echo what my colleagues have said. And I thought that this is really where civic responsibility meets local government. And certainly, we want to make sure that our children are safe. We want to make sure that as many people want to vote, can have a place to park without having to cross major highways, et cetera, et cetera. So this is just the right thing to do.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. I too will be supporting this amendment because of the importance of making sure that we have open access to our voting polls and that we do not create impediments because of the primary use of our buildings being education. At the same time, because of the proximity of many of our buildings to major thoroughfares, there are times where our daily activities are disrupted because of police activity in the community. And that happened at the last election, where one of our polling booths had to, went on lockdown because there were students in the other part of the building. And it did cause somewhat of a disruption. And so I think that this is a very good amendment. It also, I would remind everybody that because we are talking about elections, that it is important to have our students that are able to vote in November of this year, that they can go ahead and register to vote ahead of time and vote in the primaries and special elections in advance of that. But in the context of this primary day move, that everybody also has the option to do absentee balloting or absentee voting. And we encourage the legislature to make it even easier in the future. And so with that, I will call for the vote. The motion before us is I move to amend the board's state and federal legislative program by adding the following position statement. The Fairfax County School Board supports changing the date of the primary election held in June from the second Tuesday in June to the third Tuesday in June and direct staff to determine the most appropriate placement of the revised text in the program document. All those in favor? Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Ms. Darnak Kovacs, Ms. Palchak, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Hines, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Mr. McAlveen. That motion passes. I now call on Mr. Moon for a motion regarding a contract award for the provision of graduate coursework for Fairfax County Public Schools teachers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school would approve and award a contract to George Mason University for the provision of graduate coursework to eligible FCPS instructional employees effective May 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021, and authorize the division superintendent or deputy superintendent to execute and administer such a contract on behalf of the school board.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Strauss. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, just briefly, Madam Chair. I did ask Madam Chairman to pull this from the concerned agenda because earlier today, when I was looking, taking a closer look at this particular agenda item, that I just felt that especially considering the amount of expenditure that would be required under contract, and also based upon my recollection that the board has not really had a discussion about this particular contract and board and public my benefit, hearing from superintendent and other staff to what this is about, give us a little more detail than what we have on the agenda item. And then I also, I also understand that there are several board members who have some questions about this contract. And especially, this seems to be a three-year contract, three-year contract. And we are so basically binding ourselves as far as expenditure is concerned for the, until 2021. So with that, Superintendent.
Well, thank you, Mr. Moon. I appreciate that. And one of the things we've done is we've worked based on your feedback, community feedback, and the board to change the way we've done contracts and procurement with certain amounts that now come to the board for review. And this is one that fits that definition. So the work that the board has done to build some additional transparency around contracts. This began, as you know, when I arrived, concerned about the teacher salary scale changes that we made, but concerned that one group, our BA lane teachers, were not being served well by these salary scale changes. I had just arrived. It was July. And one of the things that we did, as I was preparing my first-year budget, was to re-initiate tuition reimbursement and to make as first priority those BA lane teachers an opportunity to get additional learning opportunities and move to a master's lane. So we began to engage with local universities, including George Mason. And with George Mason, we worked to develop cohorts, cohorts that these teachers could become a part of. And for 50% support and tuition, they could begin a multi-year program that would get them ultimately to a master's. So that work has been codified. We had to go through all the contracts. And we're bringing that to you tonight. And I do have Kathleen Waltz here and Francisco Duran, who can answer in more detail to the needs of this board around the specifics of this. But it was the attempt to create a lane for, create additional learning opportunities for our BA lane teachers to receive the master's designation. And we'll be glad to answer any additional questions the board members have this evening.
Mr....
Yeah, Madam Chair. Just to be fair with two of my colleagues, that I'll just ask one question, one question for now.
Okay.
Potentially follow-up. I don't know whether I should be asking Kathleen Waltz or Dr. Braybrand?
Ms. Waltz is here, so you can direct your question to her.
I'm looking at the agenda item, which is on the board doc. Under Tuition Reimbursement Program, I understand that tuition reimbursement program is available to teachers and other employees, but the priority is given to the bachelor's salary lanes in steps 14 and higher. First, you know, tell us the rationale behind that. Secondly, you probably know that, I'm sure you should know, that the board has been discussing about basically restoring our bachelor's lanes, going all the way to step 23. Whether that discussion, I believe that there is sort of consensus on the part of board to do that, whether that changes anything to this tuition program.
Okay. So thank you for your questions. And I can start with the tuition reimbursement program. So we had set the priority groups to serve first those teacher-scale employees who were affected by the change in the BA lanes. So this happened for the 2017-2018 school year, and those priority groups have continued into this school year. So you are correct about the top priorities being those teachers who were on those BA lanes, receiving first priority for tuition reimbursement. Or they could select to participate in one of the George Mason University cohorts. It was an either-or situation. So they could go to a university of their choice and seek tuition reimbursement or participate...
So they could go to a university of their choice and seek tuition reimbursement or participate in the cohort programs. I think you had another question for me, and I'm sorry.
The issue about the BA lanes.
Issue about the BA lanes?
Yes.
Because priority is given to the bachelor's lanes in steps 14 and higher, whether recent discussion and seeming consensus on the part of board to restore bachelor's lanes and go all the way to 23 has any effect upon putting priority to the bachelor's lanes in steps 14 and higher?
Yes.
So let me answer, let me answer that first and then any additional support. It would be my intention to honor the commitment that we already made to those existing BA lane teachers who sought additional learning opportunities. However, if the board does adopt the new BA scales that we presented to you earlier in work session this week, we could decide that the prioritization of any future request for tuition reimbursement could be realigned or opened up to a reprioritization and that our BA lane teachers, now that they have restored BA lane scales, would not necessarily become first priority for future tuition reimbursement processes. So I do want to share that with you this evening. Part of it is, we haven't, we haven't got into that final decision yet, but it would be my intention to honor for those that had signed up. But going forward, we would, if the board would be so willing, we would really want to go back and reprioritize and relook at how we would do future tuition reimbursement requests in the coming year.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I ask just one quick, one more quick follow-up?
Please do, because I think you're asking the questions that many of us are also interested in hearing.
Thank you. Similarly, in the similar vein, under master's cohort tuition sharing program, first, as a point of clarification, I'm looking at the agenda item again, that something in the parenthesis right there, because it says who are in the identified pay lanes, and in the parenthesis, I have a bachelor's, bachelor's plus 15, bachelor's plus 30, and I see hyphen, and steps 15 and higher. Does steps 15 and higher is applicable to all those three lanes?
That is correct.
So again, with the restoration seeming consensus among the board members to restore the bachelor's lanes, that whether we should limit this to, we should continue limiting this to those in steps 15 and higher, or in the future honoring the current teachers who are under program, whether in the future there shouldn't be any distinction between whether you are in steps 15 or under. I guess that question perhaps go to Superintendent.
I would honor what we've already done for those who signed up. And then what I'd really do is go back and work with Dr. Duran and Ms. Waltz. Is Dr. Waltz? Dr. Waltz? No. Ms. Waltz.
He's somewhere else.
And really look at reprioritizing. We put them, you've been promoted tonight for being here.
She said he's somewhere else tonight.
I would go back honestly and reprioritize tuition reimbursement, because frankly, the need for the cohorts developed based on them being, feeling like they were now trapped in a scale, and we were trying to give them the opportunity. If we were storing that, I would still honor those that had signed up to move toward the masters, but I would open up, starting next year, the tuition reimbursement dollars with the reprioritization for other, other teachers who have learning needs and not necessarily have our BA lane teachers as first priority.
Thank you, Dr. Braybran. I am, I would like to honor those teachers already in the program, but I wonder whether we could do this just for the one-year time rather than doing it all the 2021 and give the board and opportunity to take a closer look at this?
The cohorts, which you're referring to, are already established. Teachers are in the cohorts, and we've made a commitment to them as they've made a commitment to us through fiscal year 2022, I believe it is. And so they're already enrolled. The last of the cohorts started last week.
I'm not talking about those already in the program. I'm talking about you signups. Thank you for your indulgence, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Evans?
Thank you. You have answered some of my questions. My concern here was seeing this on the consent agenda with a $1.6 million contract when we had just started a conversation about the BA lanes again. And we've, we've had a lot of conversation over the past several years about the BA lanes and the salary scales, and it appears we're at least considering restoring the top steps and restoring the BA plus 30, which I think that's something of a new idea to, to the board that we just discussed the other night. So I guess my, my thinking was that this would be better discussed as part of that conversation, as part of the overall conversation, as opposed to just moving forward with it. But other than that, I just felt that a contract of this, this size should be discussed at the board table. So I'm kind of in line with, with Mr. Moon's question there about one year. I understand we need to keep our commitment to our, our employees who have started this program. We wouldn't want to undermine that program. So I think we can all be in agreement on that. But moving forward, when we, I understand the rationale for pinpointing the top, top of the BA lane. That made sense, but now we're doing something different. So I think the idea of reprioritizing makes sense. For example, you do have in here special education.
Yes.
And that's a critical need. So perhaps with the reprioritizing, more of a focus in that area would, would be warranted. So I guess what I'm, my other question, I see this goes back to May 18th of last year and, and then goes forward as well. Would there be any harm in not approving this tonight, but asking you to go back and rethink it before we, before we move forward on it? Could we do the reprioritization rather than approving the language tonight that sets in stone something that we may not want to do?
I'm going to let them fully answer. I think I know the answer. Well, I'll let you answer. I think that's not possible, because we need the contract to begin to have the payment for those who are already in the existing cohort, get the match, the 50% match we've already promised them. And we haven't been able to pay the dollars yet.
And so if we can say that this is really about separating the philosophy where we entered into in looking at the BA lanes and really about more of the record-keeping behind the scenes. So there was a philosophy to provide those employees a bit more prioritization for the cohorts and understanding that we did bring a plan to the board, but we don't have any clarity from the board where we're going with that. The discussions that we have had is that we have always wanted to have the intention of, of no longer providing that priority to those individuals if we brought the, them up to the 23 steps. So I'm going to have Michelle Pratt talk about the reasons why we have to have a contract signed, because we have invoices that we need to take care of with GMU. In order to do that, there's a process for that. So I'm going to have Michelle talk.
So before Ms. Pratt speaks, I think it would be helpful for you to respond, to put this in the context of the discussions that this board had last spring regarding the GMU relationship and the cohorts that were going through it, and why this is an administrative catch-up.
So based on the board's discussion last spring and the agreement to move forward with these cohorts, we, in procurement, reached out to George Mason to kind of document and start the conversation of what that, this contract would look like. It took a lot longer than anyone could have ever imagined. So we basically were on hold for a series, about four or five months, not to any single person's fault, but that is how it happened and why we're backdating this to the May 2018 timeframe. The policy, there's no, there's no law or provision in the purchasing resolution or any purchasing code that says that we have to compete this business, but because we have a policy that says that the board would approve these types of contracts over $250,000, we're bringing this to you now. As Marty indicated, we have invoices that need to be paid and can't move forward with the spring cohort and that reimbursement process until those invoices are paid.
Well, I have to say, I believe I'm still on my time, correct?
Yes, Ms. Evans.
So that certainly gives me some pause, that we have invoices that need to be paid, and we don't have a valid contract for that. So what would we do about these invoices if the board didn't approve the contract I mean, surely someone has thought of what we would do with, if we, if we're, aren't we obligated to pay those invoices from somewhere?
So we would be unable to continue the cohorts that we have established if we couldn't pay the invoices?
But surely we have to pay invoices that have already been given to us?
That is correct.
Correct? And under what authority would we do that?
I would say this, this is the best way I can explain it. We came to you all, we came to you all in my first year with teachers who were upset where they were as we made teacher scale adjustments. We offered a solution, which was to create cohorts to get them to a master's level. We engaged George Mason in partnership to do it, but the backend, and there were new rules concurrently that same year that the board asked around how we did contracts, particularly unique contracts around professional development, contract amounts. The, just the hard reality of this is the work and negotiations between George Mason and ourselves to finalize those details, which we hadn't done. We hadn't been doing tuition reimbursement. We hadn't had these sort of cohort relationships for a long, long time, because we'd been out of the tuition reimbursement business. It took longer. But we had wanted, if you recall my very first year, to get those cohorts started as early as January of that year, to get teachers enrolled so they could get to work on starting a program that would lead them to a master's. So we sped up getting the, the arrangement done, and we were lagging on the backside with the, with the financial protocols to get it done. And again, we're bringing it to you in full transparency tonight. It was no attempt not to. Again, the spirit of the board, we felt in bringing it to you even, again, in my first year, last year, was that we were going to do these cohorts, but this backend administrative work hadn't been completed. It's been completed, and we brought it to you for, for your review. But we, this is not a new direction. This is the existing direction that the board had given last year. And I recognize that it's complicated a bit more, because now we've been working continually on resolving BA lanes, and we brought you a recent BA lane solution that I think will create probably less demand for teachers who want to feel like they've got to go to the masters. And we would reprioritize future tuition reimbursement for other folks.
So I will say, we can't pull the rug out from under our, our teachers who have in good faith started this program, and we've got to pay our bills. If we do reprioritize, would we need to go, would we need to have a new contract? Would we need to have, I mean, presumably, you would have to bring us back a new contract, an amended contract, an amendment, something? No?
So if I could speak specifically to the contract, the $1.675 million is specifically for the cohorts and the special education classes that are detailed in the document. This does not include tuition reimbursement. There is a piece about tuition reimbursement as it relates to GMU, because they gave us a discounted rate. So we included the language about tuition reimbursement, but the 1.6-plus million does not include tuition reimbursement. It's just cohorts and the special education classes. Hopefully, that helps.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Mr. McElveen?
So I, I appreciate Ms. Evans' questions, because I came into the evening with the same questions. I think the timing of this is, is very inauspicious. And the way it's being framed right after our discussion about the BA lanes is unfortunate. But I do have to say that it's critical that we honor the promises that we've already made to the folks that have started this program. And we're just going to have to decouple this from, from the BA lanes discussion. And once, once we figure out what, what we're actually going to be doing with the B lanes, BA lanes, revisit this, because we do have these contractual obligations.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
I think most of my questions have been answered, but I, I would just give this caution that I think this board has been consistent in pushing for being informed in a timely fashion. And it would be helpful as we go forward. And I know that hindsight is 2020, and none of us are perfect, and I'm not being critical of staff. Please take it in, in context. But considering the responsibility that the public has for us, then we have to rely on the reports that we receive. And so it would have been helpful, obviously, to receive that information earlier. And so going forward, I look forward to reports, decoupling the issues and also making it clear, you know, where these monies are going and how we need to go forward.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Ms. Darnack-Kovacs?
I, I agree with Ms. Keys-Gamara's comments, but I, I did just want to point out that we did approve these monies in May. Then, you know, as Dr. Braybran said, this contract is coming up because of the amount before us, and then he's offered the opportunity for us to look at it. And, 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 you know, it is, it's a timing issue, the way all of these things have rolled in. But I think, thank you for, you know, explaining it to us. I appreciate it being pulled off the agenda to have a further discussion. But I do think, since we did approve it in May, and, and there's some new things in the budget and new solutions for the BA in the, in the budget that have came up as a result of that, but I think we need to separate this and move forward on this commitment. And then I really appreciate, Dr. Braybran, you offering to say we can look at it again next time, because now we have other solutions on the table.
And my own reflection, if I may, on the fly. Consent agenda and my, consent agenda is something sometimes I don't take that extra level of pausing to see every piece that's in there. It's been contracts that typically haven't been in this area. It's been contracts around facilities, sort of the, the regular contracts that come. This contract was around a particular issue that the board was already doing. Had I flagged it, I should have pulled it myself. And I thank Ms. Evans for reaching out, I think, to the chair today and saying, I'd like it to come off consent and have a discussion. I should have set up that discussion, frankly, off the consent agenda and had a presentation about where we were, and I think it would have served the board better and eliminated some of the confusion, and I apologize for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybran. I appreciate those remarks. I have Ms. McLaughlin.
So I, I appreciate that there's been a lot more clarity on this, especially the reminder that, in fact, this was something that the board committed to last May. I do think it's just kind of a helpful reminder for, for us as a board and our working relationship with you, Dr. Braybran, that things that relate to our employees, where it's a benefit or something where we're trying to then put it into context to how additional monies are going to be spent, we can just learn from this one and have a better sense of it. I think, on the one hand, it's, it's wonderful that we have this opportunity in this financial climate to continue honoring what we hope to do, which was to help our teachers move toward the masters who don't have it. My only question, again, not for tonight, because it's a long evening already, but something just to plant the seed, is that it's been raised in prior public comments that the way in which people pursue a master's degree and, and get credit for it, it could be typically something very robust, but some people have joked that you could literally get your master's in basket weaving, and that would suffice. So I was wondering, Dr. Braybran, if you or one of your team could maybe just speak ever so briefly, not expecting a lot? ever so briefly, not expecting a lot of information, but maybe just shed some light on what this George Mason program really builds toward, because I think it's important for people to understand that this is actually what we would envision, a way of strengthening the professional training of our teachers. And I wanted to dispel that kind of myth, and I'm hoping it's a myth, that basket weaving isn't what we're actually, you know, granting in terms of master's preparation.
We have no basket weaving cohorts. So, with that, teachers could select from a variety of cohort opportunities. There was one that they could select, which most of our teachers selected, was around technology, using technology in the classroom. We have other cohorts that teachers have selected around special education, ESOL. Many of our teachers have selected a personalized path, which would help them to grow and develop in their current career. And so, each one of these programs has been endorsed. It is an accredited program, and all of them are out of the School of Education, and I think it's Human Development. So, all of them have been vetted. We selected the cohorts that they could enter, so they've been vetted not only by George Mason, but also by FCPS employees.
Great. Thank you very much. And then, one final question, again, for further thought, that as I remember, the amount of funding that the Board approved last May is just sort of the tip of the iceberg, that there are many, many more teachers who would like to be able to take advantage of it. So, again, if you wouldn't mind, because I think it's helpful to the public, to just maybe touch on that briefly, about how this is really only a tiny amount compared to what we would really ideally like to be able to offer for the demand that's there.
We have an overwhelming number of employees who have requested tuition reimbursement, and we're not able to satisfy all of the requests. We did provide some of that data. And just as an example, for spring 2018, we had 272 employees apply for tuition reimbursement, and 181 were approved. And then, we look to fall of 2019, and we have 512 total who have requested reimbursement, and 181 who were approved. And that's based on the priority, priority lanes, but also on the funding that is available. So, we've had $125,000 for three semesters now for tuition reimbursement. It is not enough to cover the need, but at least we are satisfying some.
Just, just to connect with the Board, in the budget presentation I made when we talked about staffing initiatives, I had tuition reimbursement as a possibility to consider, and those demand numbers are just part of, we had a 10-year freeze on tuition reimbursement. I mean, we eliminated it years ago, but I honestly see it as a staffing piece that helps keep our teachers. It keeps them being learners, which we want to do in Fairfax, but it's also, it's an added advantage that helps people stay in Fairfax and commit to Fairfax County Public Schools. So, the demand that we have, I mean, two to three times more than what we currently even can support, is worthy of it. And to be honest, if we reprioritize, as we were talking about tonight, we're going to get additional dollars that now can be redirected to other employees that have applied for tuition reimbursement.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I'm looking at the actual motion 5.05, and as I read it, Madam Chair, I don't think it shows the actual dollar amount. Is that correct? I mean, I know we talked about that the reason we're voting on it is because it's hitting a threshold, but is there a reason it doesn't list the value? It can be a range? Because I'm just trying to, again, for the public's awareness and even for the Board, about what we're granting in this contract, you know, because it is for three years. And so, if I remember, we're basically committing across the three years up to 1.6 million?
Right.
Okay. So, to what Ms. Walz had shared, we're authorizing currently for the fall of 2019 about $125,000 in reimbursement?
I'm sorry, that was fiscal year 19, which is fall 2018. I apologize for that.
Oh, that's okay. Yep. Okay. So, thank you. So, this past fall, $125,000. Because you noted that now there's like 500, was it 500 then that wanted it, but we only, is there a reason that if we've got 1.6 million committed to it, that we only released 125,000?
Yes. So, the 1.6 million is for the cohort programs as well as the special education classes. It does not include tuition reimbursement. The funding allocated for tuition reimbursement over the last three semesters was 125,000 per semester.
Okay.
And that's separate from the contract.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So, Ms. McLaughlin, are you suggesting an amendment to the motion that would include the dollar amount?
I wasn't necessarily wanting to complicate things at this, this time. I just felt it was important that, A, that it be stated about the dollar value, and just to have maybe a little bit better understanding.
Right. The last sentence of the summary key points, and I hope you have the same thing that I have, says, it's an estimate, it's a three-year term, no more than 1.6 or 1.675 million, and the range each year, based on the level of participation in the cohort, and that demand would go anywhere from 200,000 up to 520,000.
And that might actually be on the agenda. It's just the motion in front of us doesn't.
Oh, I see.
So, I, that's, yeah.
I see. Thank you.
So, there's probably on the electronic agenda, the details that you're just describing, Dr. Braybrand. I just wondered why what we officially voted on
No, that's a good catch.
Doesn't necessarily have it there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Strauss?
So, I was going to say, tuition reimbursement, before we got, had to get rid of it all in the last 10 years, was a very, very important benefit and support to our employees. And it was one of the things that people would talk about in why they would choose to work for Fairfax County instead of someplace else, and it was the level of support. As I'm sure most of you realize, our teachers have to do recertification courses, and for, for many of our employees who decide to do a master's, even if it's online, it's about $15,000. And that's a lot for, for a teacher's salary. That's a great deal. And most of them will choose to do a master's while they are working full-time and doing all the other work. But many, many of our teachers do this. They want to learn more, they want to serve our children better, and obviously, they earn more money over time, but much of it is driven, hopefully, because they want to be better teachers, and that, that is truly what we want to support. So, even though there's sort of a glitch in when probably GMU finally released the contract itself for final signatures, I do recall supporting this and supporting this amount of money a year ago. So, this is sort of our second bite at this apple. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Mr. Moon?
Just a couple of points for clarification. So, we are being asked to approve the contract between us and George Mason. That doesn't necessarily mean the Board has agreed to fund certain amount yet, because we fund on a yearly basis. We will be honoring the commitment made to the employee, teachers who are already in the program, but in actual amount is concerned, we make an yearly decision, and it's not before us. And so, we are basically just approving
That's a true statement.
The contract as negotiated between us and George Mason. Our next question has to do with the actual amount. 1.675, we not obligating ourselves to pay George Mason any amount? We can, at any point, we can withdraw from this contract?
Well, yes, but I think we would be facing the, the, the caring culture that we made a commitment to join.
I'm just asking question. I'm not saying that we will do that, because
You're asking about our flexibility.
Correct. And, and when I have this range between $200,000, $520,000 per year, even though, in the maximum, if the maximum is 520, you multiply that by three, that doesn't become 1.675. That's less than that. So, I have that question, but that's besides the point. That, when I see this range, there will be all subject to number of people, number of teachers who may be applying to become part of the cohort, the special education program, correct?
Yes.
And, and, and that will become, again, a line item in the budget, and they will be presented to the school board for approval, because we're not, we're not saying that you are authorized to spend 1.675. We're not, we're not giving that blanket authorization at this point. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes. The contract is just the vehicle that facilitates our ability to encumber and make payments, right? So, there's no amount listed in the contract that says we will pay George Mason a fixed amount. You'll note, there's no minimum number of students or participants, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you so much. With that, I can support the contract.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I apologize, I don't think this has been answered. Are there other, other contracts for graduate studies that we have for our employees that they might be able to get their additional education?
So, we do have a UVA leadership cohort, and I'm going to ask a colleague here about the total amount. That's approximately $90,000 a year.
And, and are the, are teachers that want to pursue graduate studies, are, under, with this contract, are they all, will they all be attending George Mason? Or will there still be other teachers who will be going through graduate programs at other universities?
Yes. So, the answer is yes to both. So, the cohort program and the structure that we've provided is through George Mason University. So, if a teacher wanted to join a cohort, it's a 50-50 share of the tuition. However, if a teacher wanted to go to a different university for a master's program, they could seek tuition reimbursement.
And at what rate would they be reimbursed for that?
It's $700 per class, with a maximum, maximum of two classes reimbursed per year.
And under this contract, potentially, it's 1.67 million over the, over the, over three years. How much a year does, does FCPS spend in tuition reimbursement to other universities?
So, currently, it is budgeted for $125,000 per semester.
For all other universities?
For all other universities. And if somebody wanted to take a master's program at George Mason University outside of the cohorts, for a different subject area, they could certainly seek tuition reimbursement for that as well.
Okay. I mean, I think it would be useful, I don't know that tonight's the night, I think, as people have said already, we, we must, you know, we've committed to this, that we have discussed this, but I think it might be useful at a future work session, Dr. Braybrand, to explain a little more again about how we came, came to the decision as a division to really give the bulk of those graduate dollars to George Mason University, which I'm a huge fan of George Mason myself, having a son who's a patriot, but I think it would be, would be helpful. And I do want to, although I think there is an issue with the timing in terms of our discussion of this, I want to just commend you, Dr. Braybrand, because I, I've mentioned before the need to provide alternative incentives for our teachers to connect and stay connected to Fairfax County. And I think this, this sort of program is a tremendous incentive and benefit to our teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I too will support this motion. I am particularly pleased, not only with the cohort approach, which started last year, but the emphasis on encouraging people to pursue special education degrees. As many of, as we all know, special education teachers are one of the greatest shortages that we face. And so, this goes along with what the Governor is talking about, growing our own, and so, I'm fully supportive of this. And we do look forward to a further discussion on BA lanes, as well as how we can best support our teachers to be the lifelong learners that we want all of our students to be. So, with that, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McLaughlin, I thought you had turned it off.
No, I did, but I, when you spoke about our special education teacher and the need for more of them, I, I did want to take this opportunity, Dr. Braybrand, to share with you that I will be passing along input from a veteran special education teacher in our district, who is concerned that one of the reasons we are having a shortage is because we are having difficulty with our new special education teachers coming in, and in their first three years, being able to pass through that hurdle of being, I guess, I'm trying to think of what we, we say when the teachers end up being, after three years of getting their tenure.
Yeah, provisional license.
Yeah, their provisional license, but, but in terms of their working with us and being evaluated every year, and then being brought forward and, and reaching that tenured status with us, part of the challenge that this, this veteran teacher shared with me is that currently, the way in which all teachers, all new teachers go through every year to get evaluated in their first two years with us, is through the assistant principals and the principals reviewing them. But if those assistant principals and principals do not have special education training, when they go in to evaluate a special education teacher, they could accidentally write up a special education teacher for not following instructional best practice, when in fact, by special education standards, they were absolutely following best practice. And I, one case was brought to my attention, which I then brought to HR last year and worked with Dr. Ramey on it, but it certainly piqued my awareness that we may want to, from our own division work, examine why it is we're, we're losing our special education teachers, particularly in their first three years with us, and if, in fact, it might require some additional professional development and training for our principals and assistant principals who are needing to do the type of evaluation that understandably, they may not have that background to know. I hope I'm making sense here, that it is, it is a special understanding. And when you talked about Ms. Corbett Sanders, which is correct, a deep need in our school division and perhaps around the country, but I am, I wanted to plant that seed of awareness that we do need to make sure that we look into cases where our special education teachers maybe aren't getting past their provisional review in those first three years, what, what's transpiring.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. And with that, I will call for the vote. Do you want me to reread it, or are we okay? Do we know what we're, okay. So, I call for the vote. All those in favor? And that is unanimous with Ms. Hines having left the table. That motion passes. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for the approval of the Board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through the Board review, and documentation has been provided to all Board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any Board member prior to the meeting. 6.01, approve the minutes of the November 19th and December 6 regular meetings. 6.02, confirm the separations for the period beginning December 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018. 6.03, confirm the appointments and separations for the period beginning October 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Item 7, new business. Following our new business agenda items, there will not be Item seven, new business. Following our new business agenda items, there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. Seven point zero one, award the contract for the gymnasium floor replacement at Fairfax High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item seven point zero two, award a contract for the Silverbrook Elementary School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item eight, the superintendent matters. Next on the agenda is superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders, I certainly appreciate that. I really only have one matter I want to share with you all tonight. I know all of us continue to have in our thoughts and prayers are furloughed federal employees and contractors. I want you to know that we have seen very positive results from the three hiring fairs that we have done here in Fairfax County Public Schools with your support and direction, and helped folks become substitute teachers for Fairfax County. We have had three hiring events with five hundred and twenty-five participants. I really want to take a moment to thank Marty Smith, Dr. Helen Nixon, and Sean McDonough, Sean Brooks, the entire HR team for their fantastic work in turning this around in lightning speed to help these applicants become part of the Fairfax County Schools' family. Sixty-six individuals have already started subbing in our schools, and we have seventy-seven future substitute assignment schedules. Isn't that wonderful?[718.01][718.01][applause] This really is Fairfax County showing its caring culture, and I'm just proud to be in a school system that's doing the right thing for our community, who serves us by letting us have the opportunity to educate their children, and we're having the opportunity to support them in their time of need. And I continue to have thoughts and prayers for all of them and their families, and I am hopeful that the issues that have brought us the shutdown will be resolved soon. And sometimes what it needs is stuff needs to be brought up and collaborated and listened to one another, and I feel this board has really modeled that work, and hopefully, folks that are in charge of the shutdown are watching this and will come up with a resolution by tomorrow or even tonight. So thank you very much, that's all I have. Happy first semester, ending by the way, too.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Nine point zero, board committee reports. Next on the agenda is board reports, and I call on Ms. McLaughlin for an audit committee report, and Mr. Moon for a report on the forum held earlier this evening.
Just a brief summary of the audit committee met on Wednesday evening, and in the updates that we got from our Auditor General Esther Ko, she shared with us that the actual status of our audit work is on schedule, so that was encouraging. She also shared with us a copy of what she calls the Audit Buzz, with a cute little bee, bumblebee, as part of its logo, but it's basically her publication. She had one in December, and our Clerk of the Board, Eileen Mulberg, recommended that the school board, executive administrative assistants, all get us registered on there so that we can receive her Audit Buzz, and she said four hundred stakeholders have signed up to receive that newsletter updates. Then we got a report on the business process turnover audits, and thankfully, they were very minor, the findings, but most importantly, for the board's interest, we will be receiving, for the first time, a mid-year report from our Auditor General at the February eleventh work session. And so to my colleagues, I want you to know that this is going to be a wonderful opportunity, if you're not serving on the audit committee, to really get a full view of the work that's being done. She's already drafted a great report that walks you through the work that's being done to date, so that was encouraging. And then she also shared with us that part of the upcoming work will be for fiscal year 2020, that they will be developing next year's audit focus based on risk assessment priorities. And so she anticipates probably sharing with us about thirty-eight different items, but certainly welcomes board members to also provide their individual input of areas of interest and focus. So just to put that on your radar. And so she anticipates that will happen sometime between March and April, and then they will scope out those topics, identify the fiscal value of those topics, which ones are high, moderate, or low risk. And then by May to June, they'll finalize a recommended audit plan for the board's then-approval for the upcoming year. So we're continuing to have a great time on audit, from what I can see.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board held a forum discussion earlier this evening. Forum is where individual school board members can bring the topics of their interest for more or less informal discussion. And tonight, we had one topic, very important topic, it was about how to help high school students create balance in their lives, keep from being overwhelmed, and specifically to discuss how to encourage students to keep the number of AP and IB courses they take to a reasonable number. The topic was brought forth by Ms. Evans, Madam Chair, and Ms. Hines, and the board agreed to refer this to a work session for much deeper discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Item ten, board matters, and I call on Ms. Strauss.
In the interest of time, since we have more work to do, I just want to thank Dr. Braybrand and staff again for the job fairs. It was a wonderful, wonderful idea. And I met some of the folks coming on the elevator last night, they were excited. So many thanks for all of your work.
Ms. Evans?
I want to thank everybody who came out for my community office hours, which I shared with Delegate Kate Corey. It was a great conversation, so thank you for participating. I was sorry that I had to reschedule my meeting with PTA presidents due to weather. We've had a lot of that lately, so that will be rescheduled, I believe, probably in March.
Ms. Keys, Kamara.
Yes, I'd like to say how much I enjoyed attending a couple of Martin Luther King services this past Monday at the First Baptist of Vienna, and also at the Tinner Hill, historically African-American community in Falls Church. And I look forward to Black History Month and perhaps having further recognitions. The only other thing I will say is that I do have a couple of office hours scheduled, and you folks should be receiving a newsletter shortly.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I just wanted to update the board that yesterday I attended one of Skip's subcommittees. It's on our community schools. And as many of you are aware, this is something that a lot of conversation over the years have happened about community schools. And the good news is, Dr. Braybrand, as you know, many of our schools are already model, a type of community schools focus of trying to provide wraparound supports to some of our students and families with the greatest need. But what was exciting about serving on this community schools subcommittee, which Dr. Duran also is serving on with me, is getting the ability to hear at a very granular level the two pilot programs, at Whitman Middle School, as well as Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School. And I know that Ms. Kofax and Ms. Corbett Sanders, you, I'm sure, are very proud of the work that our principals are doing there. They attended the subcommittee meeting yesterday, it was two-hour discussion. We got to get an update on how well things are going, the types of services that are happening in the schools, what we're learning as a division about how to develop these community schools, because Montgomery County across the river has had community schools for well over a decade, maybe even two decades. And so we're playing a little bit of catch-up in terms of formalizing community schools, but I do want to say that it's just so exciting to be on a subcommittee that includes the county services along with schools, and to see this type of partnership, and this commitment, and this excitement, enthusiasm for growing it. And so I do want to say a shout-out to Dr. Duran. It's great that you and I are both being able to get this type of front row seat in this type of work, and so I just wanted people to know that's going on. And then the other thing I just wanted to just take a quick moment is that I appreciated tonight's forum conversation. For anyone in the public who was following it, it might have created some consternation for students and families, because the way that the topic was presented of whether or not we would consider placing limits on AP and IB courses per school year for students. And so I just wanted to make sure that the audience knows that virtually everyone on the board said we value and recognize the importance of students and parents being, you know, key decision-makers in the coursework that students take. And so that, I think, is going to continue to be at the forefront of this further review. But I also did want to emphasize, again, my desire that we continue to have a more focused look at teacher and student workload issues. I think that a lot of the stress that we're hearing from teachers and students have to do with the amount of assessments, the tests and quizzes that the teachers give to students, and that puts the stress on the students, but then it also puts stress on teachers, that they have to develop the tests and quizzes, they have to correct the tests and quizzes, they have to sometimes offer retests and make up more tests, and they have to enter everything into the CIS account. And so I really do think that as we look more holistically about not just student stress levels, but teacher stress levels, a lot of it, I think, can be examining how we can have our assessments be more focused on the quality than the quantity, and also the homework.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Moon?
Madam Chair, I'll be very brief. I was able to go to Waypos Mill Elementary School on Valentine's Challenge, along with my colleague Ryan McElvin, worked on creating some cards, but, you know, my artistic talent was no way close to Mr. McElvin's. I should be taking some private lessons from you. And last week, I was able to spend some time with two different groups of educators from other countries, one from China and another from Korea. The Chinese educators were visiting Fullerton Elementary School, and the Korean educators were on the exchange program with the Westfield High School.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Darrenak Kofax?
Yes, I was able, with several of my colleagues, a few weeks ago, to attend Lee High School's IB conferring ceremony, and it was wonderful to see our graduates who were home for their holiday break, and who came back to what is now their alma mater to be honored for their very hard work on achieving the IB diploma through a beautiful ceremony that include band, chorus, and future IB diploma candidates. So that was wonderful to see. Yesterday, I had a very inspiring afternoon, meeting with key middle school students as part of their Now or Never group. This is a student-initiated group that began almost a year ago after the tragic shooting at Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. And these young students shared very personal stories of how this tragedy changed them, and how they felt they needed a call to action to try to curb gun violence and to keep our schools and communities safe. We had an amazing, robust conversation on the safety and mental health improvements we here in Fairfax County have made, and they are looking to see how they can further make their mark. They are looking to meet with other elected officials who want to talk about this, and they hope to go up to Capitol Hill and talk to our legislators there, as well as our state's allegation here. So it was an amazing day, and as I told them, I said, I wish your group never had to come into being, but since you have, you are, you know, they were so optimistic about change and being able to make change, and I think all of us as adults need to see that young optimism sometimes, and it was a great afternoon. And this weekend, I am our board's member of the Federal Relations Network of NSBA, and as your representative, I will be attending an advocacy institute this weekend through Tuesday to hear about national issues impacting our schools. And I know this year's, the topic of their, primary topic of their conversations are focusing on equity, just as we are. I will also be part of the Virginia delegation on Monday that will be meeting with Tim Kane and Mark Warner to make them aware of the issues impacting our schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darrenak Kofax. Mr. McElvin?
Tammy, thank you for representing us at the federal conference this coming week, and for being in the room when you meet with our senators and congressmen, that's very important. You know, one of the things Tammy also mentioned was the IB completion ceremony, or the IB diploma presentation ceremony at Lee, and, you know, several other of our high schools have that, but not all of them do. So it would be great to see if that could be something we could institute throughout the entire county and make that an equitable experience, because really, it's a powerful, powerful thing. Just to build on what Dr. Braybrand said about our community coming together during the shutdown, it was great to see and hear about the turnout we've received from folks interested in becoming substitutes. But last night, I had the opportunity to go to West Springfield High School, where the Young Democrats Club and the Young Conservatives Club came together and put together a potluck dinner for families affected by the furlough, and these were kids just trying to make an impact. And they had around thirty families come out, and for many of the families that did not come out, those that did took packaged food back to them, because some people might not feel comfortable coming out, some had barriers in terms of transportation and those kind of things. So really, that's the kind of thing that we're seeing in our schools. I know so many of our schools have food banks that they're working on filling up, and so really, it's just a powerful thing to see our community come together.
Thank you, Mr. McElvin. Ms. Palczek?
Yes, first of all, Dr. Braybrand, I received a text from a friend of mine this morning, a federal employee, who said that she came out for the Wednesday's furloughed employee session, and she was so impressed with our school system. The orientation was amazingly efficient and informative, and it blew her away. And so I know, as a young mom of a very young child, this is a stressful time for so many families in the region. So I appreciate the effort that you and your staff have done to really put this together, you know, very quickly, and just wanted you to hear that the community truly appreciates it and gets to see what an amazing system we have. So I wanted to thank you for that. I wanted to echo, I was able to join many of my colleagues at events on Monday, my fourth time, making cards, Mr. Moon. I'm still not very good at it, so I just let the kids do it, as our service day at the JCC for Waypos Mill Stamp Project. This is for foster kids who are going off to college. So not only supporting them while they're here, but as they move on to know that they're still loved and cared for. And loved joining, on a very cold day, it was our fourteen-degree day, the march in Tinner Hill, which is part in the county Providence District, part in the city of Falls Church. So that being said, I hope everyone has a good, long weekend for our kids, get some rest, and we will see you back next week.
Thank you, Ms. Palczek. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this morning, when I woke up, like the rest of you, into the almost complete darkness at 7:00 AM, I had to laugh when I got a note from my wife mid-morning that said, I can't believe it's the seventy-fourth day of January, which is, that's kind of what it feels like this time of year. And I think that the comments that my colleagues have made today about the community coming together and the work of the school system is exactly the antidote for the challenges that people face this time of year. My family and I, over the weekend- this time of year. My family and I, over the weekend, we volunteered at the hypothermia shelter in Reston. And, you know, it really, really sheds light on, on what the reality is for some members of our communities. So I think it was Martin Luther King that said, darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. And I think some of what people have talked about tonight, and, and I always think that our student representative and tonight, all the student representatives, bring a positivity and encouragement to us through your comments. So again, Mr. Tigner, you've done a great job, and I thank you for your comments. Be on the lookout, I do plan to have some office hours soon. I might, we'll be sending out a notification of those soon, hopefully. Thank you.
Palchuk?
If I have a make, a quick go-back, because our work session changed last week, I did have to change my office hours, so just wanted to send that out, if that's okay, that they have been updated. It will now be next Wednesday from 4:00 to 5:30, same place, Panera Mosaic, because we had a last-minute change. So thank you for letting me share that.
Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. And I'll be brief. I did want to thank the superintendent, the two of us were able to go to the graduation ceremony of the county's Youth Leadership Academy. There were 30 high school seniors who came from many of the high schools across the county, who have, for the past year, spent time learning about all aspects of county government. They were able, over the summer, to have real work experience with, experiences with a three-week paid internship. And I was pleased to hear that FCPS, including in your office, Dr. Brabran, had an intern. And so I just was blown away by these incredible young people who had great experiences and great insights as to how they can contribute to our community. And we hope to see them back after they graduate from college. I also had the opportunity to attend the Bethlehem Baptist Church and Ventures in Community Celebration of Martin Luther King Day this past weekend, where we celebrated the incredible skills and thoughtfulness of three students who had written essays. There were many more that had submitted essays, but three of them won awards for writing about the impact Martin Luther King has had on their lives, even though he predeceased them, or predeceased, or died before they were born. And so it was an incredible experience, these three young people, two from Mount Vernon High School and one from West Potomac. And I will be sending out a copy of their essays so that people can read them. Truly inspirational. I also wanted to thank everybody who participated in the CTE Advisory Group meeting this morning. We had a robust discussion about the importance of our CTE programming. And I will see people, I am inviting people to the Mount Vernon Town Hall on February 2nd, and I hope to see you there. With that, we need to go back into closed session. So I will make the motion. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss and consider disciplinary and other matters concerning one or more students pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A2 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon and seconded by Ms. Strauss. All those in favor? And that is unanimous with Ms. Hines away from the table.